I call this regular meeting of the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors. We just pause about a moment of sound. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Which we're doing.
In your eyes. To this one, with the liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Think you might have a car longer. Alright. Do we have an adoption of the agenda?
So many.
Do I have a second? Motion is made by Mr. Weaver and second by Ms. Booker. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver? The aye motion passes four zero one. Mr. O'Brien on the way. Mr. O'Brien, you on there? I'm sorry.
Yep.
What's your vote, sir?
Aye.
Five zero. Alrighty, Mr. Dahl?
Just a couple things, Mr. Chair. Well, I just, we gave some dates last meeting. Just a reminder, Blue Ridge Health District does have some upcoming COVID testing clinics in the county again. We have actually one today that's occurring at Beaver Dam Baptist Church from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM today. Again, that's, anyone that wants to get tested can just drive on up and as long as they've got availability of tests, you can get tested. And in addition, on March, Wednesday, March 31st, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Fluvana County High School bus route, there'll be another COVID-19 testing clinic at the high school. Again, register three one or three two to guarantee a test. But again, drive-in and walk-up tests are available. And kind of just going a little off script a little bit. So Debbie Smith was working with VDH today and actually they went out and looked at some, some facilities in the county, some county facilities for doing vaccine clinics. It looks like we're going to, and this is not necessarily, everything's not, not ready for, for the media yet per se, but it looks like we're going to be doing it every Friday at the Carries Brook Gym, you know. And I think we've got, I think they said it's around two, they could do about 200 people per day. And I think it's based upon current vaccinations. So we're planning on doing the Carries Brook Gym from, from basically next Friday through May. And that's going to be weekly. So, you know, anyone that wants to get tested locally, you know, make sure you register through the, through the state's, state's vaccination site, whether it's online or calling the hotline number. Sorry, I don't have that here. Every Friday.
I know it's not.
Yeah, it's probably going to be like, like we did at the high school, probably from 9:00 AM until like 3:00, 3:00 PM.
Nine to three thirty.
Yeah, Mr. Spitzer and Ms. Smith went out there and met with some of the health department representatives today.
The parking's not too good, so I hope we better have a handicap area. And it's not a lot of parks.
No, there's not, but the good thing is, you know, we can, we can have some.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying the parking is not the best. And we need to have some.
They may have a company coming in to do parking for the park. But they said it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're going to try to work with social services for parking to try to get the park moved away from the gym and that type of stuff.
Yeah.
So how it works.
Yeah, so again, it looks good, you know, we're getting something, you know, we'll kind of have something, you know, in place on the weekly days.
So we have requirements on that? Eight groups?
Well, no, and, and, and like I said, probably by the next meeting, I'll have more specific information for the board at, at that meeting on, on what it's going to be. I know right now they're certainly wanting to target those that are 65 and older and, and getting that population vaccinated. And then they'll just kind of be basing it on the phased, of the phased approach and those that are really actually, you know, registered in their, in their system. So, so like I said, it, good thing, we'll, we'll kind of keep it going. Another kind of bit of good information here and good news. So we had an environmental honor was awarded to Ida Swinson. She is with the Rivanah Master Naturalist. Blue Ridge Outdoor is one of the premier environmental publications in the eastern US. Recognize Ms. Swinson as a 15-year-old, as a 15-year Virginia Master Naturalist. And she was voted, voted as, from three individuals voted by over 62,000 readers, best in the Blue Ridge in the environmentalist category. She's volunteered far over probably 5,000 hours doing lots of stream, stream activities, invasive plant removal, et cetera. You know, working with early grade schoolers out at the park. So again, you know, great recognition for, for Fluvana County and Ms. Swinson for all the work that she's doing in the county. One other update, I am going to be out of the office. I'm taking a little time off. My son's graduating from the Navy in his special program, so I'm going to go see him do that. So I will be out of the office March 11th through the 14th. Ms. Twisdale will be acting county administrator during that time. But again, I'll, I'll have connectivity if anything burning comes up. And just a couple other real quick things. I just want to get the board's kind of indication on something. We were, we were asked, we were asked by some of the businesses down in, on the main street area. They want to rent or they want to be able to utilize some of the grassy area up behind the historic courthouse, kind of in front of the Commissioner and Treasurers Building on the weekend. Now, that's not generally a space that we have, have for rent currently. You know, Parks and Rec has spaces that, that they rent. That's not a space that we've been renting at this point or, or, or allowing any type of, you know, free event access. Is this something the board wants us to look into, to allow, to not allow?
What do they want to use it for?
What they want to do is, they want to kind of be able to hold kind of some of their like little shopping events and market events for, for some of the businesses down in that area. And it, and it really would be a way for them to, to be able to have some more, you know, one, bring people down into the Village of Palmyra. Two, it's outside, a little better spacing and all that rather than, rather than in the businesses. But again, like I said, that's not a space that we typically rent. We could, we could either, one, allow it or add it to some of the list of spaces that we would want to rent for the future.
And this is behind the old courthouse?
That's correct.
The gray city courtyard in between the old Registrar's Office and the Treasurers Office. I have no problem with using. I mean, they're trying to grow their business and get it off the ground and I think the last thing they need to do is have to pay rent.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like I said, if we did rent it, it'd be nominal, but if the board doesn't have any, if they don't want us to go through that's, yeah, as long as there's no conflict, that's what we think. Yeah, it would, it would be on the weekend. It would be on the weekend when there's, you know, no county functions.
I think we ought to probably make some kind of thing that they have to go through the county to do it, in a way we don't have to say everybody showing up.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, yeah, there has to be some type of approval process, okay.
For, Fred, is there any liability we should be concerned with?
So, County Assembly.
Okay.
That's that. One other thing I'm looking at, I'm going to be, I'm going to be looking at opening up some county buildings. I've been talking about, you know, like I said, right now, the buildings that are open to the public, that are just blocking open to the public, Commissioner Treasurers Building, Courts, Registrar. We want to start looking at opening some buildings up, not how we had it before, but, but, but having some necessary restrictions in place. But, you know, trying to push our people to do, you know, more virtual business, electronic business like, like they've been doing, but, but still allowing individuals to do business inside buildings as, as it's, as they have been in the past. It's been about a year now. It was actually, I was looking back at the emails, about March 24th, that we kind of closed things down. So I'm going to start working on kind of an opening plan. And there's, there's lots of things to figure out because different, from the library, for instance, you know, there's, there's different things and concerns that they have from social services. And I've already reached out to some of these individuals just to kind of discuss some of this. And nothing's first set in stone, but, but we want to start working on that process a little bit. So I'm not imagining the, if the board has any concerns about that.
I think it's a good idea. We need to do that.
All right, and then the last thing is, and then I'll, then I will zip it. So we had an interesting meeting with, it's called the Virginia United Methodist Housing Development. They're a group that does a lot of senior affordable housing projects. They had, they set up a meeting with us and Southern Development. If you remember across from Lake Monticello, there's that piece of land that's been dedicated for senior housing. Well, they want to look into doing not even, on that piece of land, but there's a small commercial piece of land right next to it. They want to look at purchasing that and, and developing that whole area into senior housing. Now, there's lots of things that has to happen. Ask them through the Planning Commission, there'd be rezoning, special use permit. Yeah, special use permit, but, but anyway, they're interested in doing that. Right now, the existing parcel allows for about 70, 70 units. They would be looking at doing probably around 120 units on, on both parcels together. And it would be, again, senior affordable housing, it would be 60% AMI, 60% AMI. So like I said, we had a great meeting with them and, and some of their team yesterday and some folks with Southern Development. And they've been doing projects like this for almost 30 years and, and they would be the ones running, running the complex. But again, they just kind of wanted to get an idea of, of indication of, you know, is this something that the county feels would be a good thing? And, and from, from my standpoint, I said, I can't speak directly for the board, but I said, I know we've certainly been talking about senior housing, especially affordable senior housing in, in kind of that area. When is that going to happen? So, does the board have any, obviously this amount of folks, but.
What happened to all the planning that went into the Piedmont Alliance one that was done in 2018? That, we had an occupancy cap, we designed the building, it was across from the, from the Lake Monticello. It was probably one bedroom, two bedroom. A lot of work was put into that. Elizabeth, sorry, Elizabeth.
I, I think I know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, I think at home I still have the plans, but, so that, that has nothing to do with stuff and stretch. They beat all the marketing and all that.
Yeah, you know, remember when, when they got that, when they received discussions from it and resuming for all that, that was what, what's anticipated, but they didn't necessarily have a developer that was ready to, ready to take that, take that on. I've got a postcard here and I have some business cards too from, from some of the principals of, of Virginia United Methodist Housing Development, company that does this and, and you know, they've done lots of projects throughout Virginia. So if, if anyone wants to talk to them, I would certainly be happy to connect you. But again, like I said, they want to just kind of get an idea of, that this sounds like a, a good fit for the county. And, and it seems like it did, but like I said, you all can reach out to them individually or I can have them reach out to the board members individually as well to discuss it.
And you said 60?
60% AMI.
And so, what's that?
Douglas, it was 55,000. That's where, that's where a household of two?
A household of two. Most of them are senior couples.
Yeah.
One car, you know, one social security kind of income. And they're, they just finished a really nice facility in San Antonio. Decided, you know, Charles. And the proposal that they're looking at, they think they can build what's already set in, but if they, if they build 120 units, they'll have that many available, you know, apartments. The complex would be much nicer built all at one time.
So what I'll do.
Are we looking ahead as to whether we're going to maybe approve that or not?
No, no, and, and what I'm going to do, I just want to let you know, because you know, we've talked about senior affordable housing.
Yeah, but it means a lot of things to different people.
It certainly does. And, and what I'll do, I will just maybe have them reach out to the individual supervisors to talk to them and just get their gauge for this, get, get their gauge for the project. Like I said, it's, there's no, no approvals with it. Jim was just more of, is this something that, that the county has an interest in?
And this is the first developer from the, the interested in doing this product.
In that property there is.
And the county is not involved in that in any way.
No, no.
Just approving and changing the.
Yeah, yeah, they're not, this, 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 this program, they're not asking for tax, tax rebate or credit or anything like that.
Well, they still have a responsibility that you have to care for whoever is in the.
Oh, yes, there, there is.
You know, they're still, they're out. It's not, we're not paying, oh, please, it's just, you know, it's not money. But we are, still have people.
Yeah, just like if, you know, there are services that, that, well, so here's the thing, they may already live in the county. So we're already providing services, but maybe they're looking to, to downgrade or something like that into a more affordable, attainable property.
We had a lot of these discussions when we approved that reason for the, the original product or the plan for the. They just want to make it a little bit bigger.
Yeah, well, anyway, I will have, and the gentleman's name is, Larry Dickinson?
Larry Dickerson.
Did they talk about any kind of help components in that building? Like say you're centered, sometimes they even have a nurse or a help in the building.
It's a, no, it's, man, it's a straight.
It's independent living.
Independent living, it's not an assisted living facility. They usually do have areas for gatherings on weekends with their residents.
Social stuff.
Social, social settings. And then they also, since you're part of the United Methodist Church, it's like Baptist charities or whatever, they're very in tune and involved with, with all the social network things that are needed. And they actually bring in people to establish things with MACA with, you know, our own Little Ridge Health District. They do that at every kind of gallery that they come in. And so they've already designated, they want to have a John Shuttle stop.
Thank you, I'm just looking at the most.
Yeah. What I'll do, I'll, I'll have some of the folks reach out to you individually. I just wanted to give you a heads up that you might be getting a call about this and just, just give you a little bit about it. Yeah, again, we have some work sessions coming. Next Wednesday at 4:00 PM, we have, we have the work session for the Fire Rescue Fleet Review. Then at 7:00 PM, we have a budget, a budget work session. Then March 17th, we have another budget work session. And then March 7th, I'm sorry, 4:00 PM, a budget work session, 7:00 PM is when we set the proposed FY22 budget for, for fiscal year 22 and then another budget work session on the 24th that we needed. So we got, you know, two, three weeks of doing some, some solid budget work and getting into them, getting into more of the details of fiscal year 22 budget. And that is all that I have, Mr. Chair.
I need a few questions. Ms. Eager?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You have any questions, Mr. Dahl?
I, I just had a question for Mr. Dahl. I didn't understand. Did you say that they are not going to be looking for a tax rebate or they are?
They're not.
Okay. Yeah.
I think you need a little resume. These things come up and you present it to us. We have to ask all these questions and it should be something that gives us an idea kind of beforehand. Because we're just, you know, we're in the dark completely.
Yeah, well, like I said, this, this is so new that we just met with them yesterday, but just kind of wanted to give the board an update because they wanted to reach out to the board members and contact them. And then, and before they called you blindly, just wanted to kind of give you a, a brief summary of what, what is, what is, what they're looking at. But again, I, I can do that.
I think it's a good idea.
Alrighty, alright, thank you, man. Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Dahl. I will now open the first round of public comments. Anyone wish to address the board, please state your name and address. Keep your comments, five minutes on top, direct to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board at this time on the telephone or computer? If, if you would like to speak during public comment, please press star six. Alrighty, I have hearing nobody speaking up. I will now close first round of public comment. We have no public hearings, so now we'll move forward with action matters. A, FY21 administration building basement remodel preparation work, Ms. McGyver.
Good afternoon. As you remember, back in the fall, we discussed using Caris funds to renovate the administration basement to be a meeting space for the board and other, the board supervisors and other board, boards and groups. And when it became a, so some work was done for later for that, to get ready for that renovation. We hired Crabtree, Rover and Associates to do a design and proposal. And that was $47,670. These charges were originally charged to the Caris funds because that's what we thought we were going to use to do the renovation. In addition to the design work, there's also some pre-work that needed to be done, needed to be done to prep that space in order to make it available, in order to renovate it. So we had several companies come in and do some testing for asbestos, since it is an older building. They had to come in and remove very old insulation. And then they also had to do some mold remediation at the basement, because I'm sure you were aware, well aware of it's full of mold. It was originally planned to charge all of that, also to care as part of that renovation. When it became apparent that the budget, that the basement renovation and remodel was going to come in way over budget and not in the timeframe necessary, at that point, the project was canceled. So all of those charges were then charged to the facilities budget and that was not planned for within their budget. So they, we are asking for $60,794 from unassigned fund balance to the facilities budget to cover those charges.
Some of the items, you know, I mean, there, some of the remediation items and, and clean out items and asbestos items, those were just good things to do anyway. But remember, when we move forward with the project, you know, we told the board that if we didn't move forward that those design costs, that we could not charge to care. So again, you know, we have to cover it because we moved forward with it, but we ended up not, not completing the project, so.
My Mr. Dahl said the additional things, they needed to be done anyway, that it's not a safe space for staff to be in.
So what are we using it for or will be using it for if it's cleaned up?
That's entirely up to the board for the future for what that space is going to look like. Like I said, we were planning for the, for a meeting space, but since we, since, since the board didn't want to move forward with that proposal, you know, once we, once we moved forward with some type of, you know, if we're going to build other buildings and do some type of renovations, those spaces may have a, a use from a, from a judicial complex, but we don't know what that looks like right at this moment. But, but getting rid of some of the mold remediation, asbestos and some of the testing, those were good things to do because that space was not a great space down there. We had a lot of old files down there and we had to clean it out. So, so whatever happens in the future, the space has been, it's a, it's a blank slate, so to speak.
So it's stories right now.
It's not even sorted right now.
It's just been prepared for whatever you purpose it.
It's been, it's been, it's been cleaned out and cleared out.
Alright, anybody have a question or anything about this? Do I have a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors approve a budget transfer of $60,794 from the FY21 unassigned fund balance to the FY21 facilities budget for administration building basement remodel preparation work.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Ms. Eager, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver? Mr. O'Brien? Chair, vote aye. Motion passes five zero. There are no appointments for the day, so we'll now move forward with presentations. B, B dot quarterly update, Bethel. I'm giving up on trying to.
That's alright. Can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Okay, great. Alright, so I will be going over the updates from the last report in March to go over smart scale. The smart scale project scores and recommended scenario have been released. And Fluvana County does have one project that was on the recommended list for funding. The CTV is going to be meeting later this spring to review the recommended scenario for the state and they'll be approving the six-year improvement plan in June. And later this year, we'll also be planning ahead for round five of smart scale. And so we'll be getting in touch with the county at that time to, to go over that. So we can go over to the next page for projects. So to update about the PE studies, we've been working with Central Office to put together what we would need for a TAP grant. And we'll be getting in touch with the county soon to submit a pre-application which is going to be due in July. We've also made headway on the rehabilitation of those two bridges on Brimmo Road. The utility relocations are going to be starting soon and construction is expected to start in April on the first bridge. And then probably July on the second, or sorry, June on the second bridge. And so Brimmo Road is going to be closed to, through traffic during those repairs. That's expected to be between April and September. And so we'll be putting up signs just to notify the public that, that work will be happening. Under additional projects, if you want to go down further, we've got a sinkhole on the shoulder of Route 6, close to Route 624 Gravel Road that we'll be meeting with our contractor soon to schedule work on. So that replacement and rehabilitation will be happening soon. And then to talk about the resurfacing, the latest resurfacing list for 2021, which if you want to scroll down a little bit, that list was released actually this morning. I sent that to the county, so you probably haven't had a chance to look at that yet, but please do take a look at it and review it. Let us know if you have any questions. You'll probably notice that the list this year is shorter than past years. Part of that is due to the fact that we removed some of the subdivisions from the list and are reevaluating that due to some of the concerns that we received last year. And so we'll be taking a closer look at those for future years. And also the allocations that we received, like in Culpeper District, have been reducing every year. So we're looking for different ways to stretch out those dollars. So again, take a look at that list once you get a chance and let us know if you have any questions or concerns about that. And then with the traffic studies, we have the, the speed study on Route 600, the one from Abbey to Broken Island. We haven't gotten the signed and sealed study from the engineer yet, but we were notified that the speed limit reduction was not recommended. And then based on the conversation that I had with the Transportation Subcommittee last month, I asked them to also do a safety study on Route 616 from the county line to Route 15. And we're also looking at different locations that we can put up radar feedback signs to just, you know, help, help everyone riding that road to just be aware of what speeds they're, they're driving at. And then if you go down under county safety and operational improvements, we are reviewing requests about the site distance at Route 6 and Stage Junction Road. There are several utilities in that northwest corner. And so, and a lot of that work will have to be done outside of the right of way, but we are going to be meeting with a contractor soon to, to take a look at what, what can be done there. And then to, to kind of close out at the end, you know, designs crossroads in Palmyra have completed close to 400 work orders this fiscal year and have been hard at work, especially lately due to all the, you know, the wet weather that we've been having. So they've been tackling a lot of drainage issues. So they've been tackling a lot of drainage issues and fallen lands and things like that. So we're thankful for their contributions. Are there any questions that you all have for me?
I don't see, uh, and I know we've talked about it before, but, uh, Haynes Mill on two fifty. There's some mumbles there, just to let people know that they're about to.
It's a hill about a hundred feet before the stop sign. You can't see the stop sign over the hill. Yeah, what Mr. O'Brien's talking about. You got a stop sign ahead side, but people still tend to go through there a little quick.
I think there was a fatality to your car pushing to another car.
What, what's the location? I can't quite hear, Mr. O'Brien.
Haynes Mill off two fifty.
Haynes Mill off of two fifty? Okay. I'll look into that. Thank you.
Also at Stage Junction or six fifty-nine down at Route Six. Somebody hit the sign that says, now, the speed limit there is fifteen miles an hour, but most people go by the fifteen mile an hour speeds on the side, go with that sign. So we might want to put, right before you get to Route Six, it's just a bad curve. If you live there, you don't live there, like I said, you're not used to seeing signs that say fifteen miles an hour. So most people drive right by that.
Okay. I'll make note of that.
Bethel, one other thing, we had, we had sent in something regarding, um, in Columbia, an old Columbia Road, and I don't know what the route number is, and Route Six, there, there seemed to be a little, uh, a little fountain coming up from the road, a lot of water that was pushing up from the road there.
Right there at the main crossing, like you want to cross the bridge. If we got a lot of rain.
Right.
We're coming up through the road right there.
Okay, I'll take a look at that. I thought that we had addressed that, but I'll, I'll make sure.
I have noticed water coming up, like, when I've been driving.
Okay. Thank you.
One quick question I'll ask Mr. O'Brien about this one. You said something about a solar radar, just like warning sign, where you set it up? You're talking about that on Union Mills Road, six sixteen?
Yeah, the radar feedback signs, yep. Yeah, they'll tell you what speed you're driving at.
Had there ever been one on Six Hundred where we're talking about, like, right there, just past, uh, the? Yes. And that might be a good place to put one, because that's the curves that get people in trouble, that come around those curves and down that hill rolling.
Right. Yeah, we did put one there at, like, at Broken Island. Um, I think when we first got the signs, and I think they were helpful, but, yeah. So I think that's a good, good place where we can cycle back and put those signs up again.
One more good place would be right down there, the curve, the intersection in the bridge. So, so it can look back towards, uh, six sixteen, because those people come down that hill and cross that bridge rolling.
Right.
Just as a reminder, slow your high parts down.
Right, and then there on that Riverside Gate, you wanted to, not just on Broken Island side, but on the other side of Riverside Gate. That, yeah, because people come up the hill flying. If you're, if you're pulling Riverside Gate, uh, even if you look to one side.
Okay, yeah, we'll evaluate those locations and put those signs up.
Thank you, because trust me, that's no, that's no fun if you're in school.
Yeah, and you've got to.
Right.
Thank you so much. Anybody else also? Mr. O'Brien, I get to talk with traffic?
No, we're fine. I wasn't talking.
Y'all keep your horses on the right side of the road?
On cows, is that my problem?
Listen, I almost had an accident today because there was a chicken, a bunch of chickens hitting roads. I hit the brakes to slow down, but I didn't have Kentucky Fried Chicken anywhere. Somebody just about hit me in the back end and they driver their car. All right, thank you so much, Bethel. We do appreciate it.
Yep, have a good evening.
You, ma'am. C, twenty twenty resident survey report, Ms. Bull, Ms. Harris.
Well, that's me. Sitting here doing stuff on the, uh, Zoom meeting. Good afternoon. I don't know if I can do this sitting down or not.
Just let me go over to the next slide.
Okay, I can't get it sitting down, I'm sorry. Um, first off, did you bring all of your stuff? Yeah, nah.
One of them is from the problem channel.
It's okay. Um, so the first part of this, uh, will run through briefly because I showed you some of it. But first, I really want to take a moment to publicly thank the five hundred and twenty-four Flavanna residents. Actually, there were, he was sure we're Flavanna residents, so five hundred and twenty-four people who did take the time and very thoughtfully, um, completed the survey, even the ones that thought it was too long, too involved. And there were questions that didn't need to be asked. I still appreciate reading those comments as well. There is no quick way to present all of this. I'm not even going to try. I am not a statistician. I am a data nerd who has had so much fun with this. And any interpretation I leave to you and anyone else who wants to jump into this. So very quickly, um, just the, the image of the form on the right side of the screen where the survey was available, um, from October twenty-third through December eighteenth, it was available online. Um, we put it in, I put it in plan now every week that it was available. I put flyers in the post offices. Um, there was a Q R code that you could scan from the flyers that are in the post office. There were paper forms at the, here in the library at the treasurer's office and the commissioner president's office. Um, there were five hundred and thirty-seven total responses, thirteen exact duplicates. And as I scanned through the data, if there was even a letter difference, it became its own, um, its own unique response. Uh, this is two hundred more than responded to the two, uh, twenty seventeen survey with about the same time frame. Again, it was available in both paper and electronic form. Electronic form, there are five hundred and sixteen respondents. Paper form, there were eight. Of the folks who received the, the paper form, we paid the postage, so there was no hindrance to people getting it back to us. There were thirteen, I'm sorry, one more time. There were thirteen questions. There were twelve required questions, uh, with one part of the twelve, um, I'll talk about that in a minute, not being required, and one optional question with had four parts. There was space for additional comments, and if anyone had a question specifically for staff, staff that they wanted a response for, we gave them the space to provide that information as well. One person left a comment that they wanted answered by staff and that was it. Okay, thanks. Um, these are just all of the questions. They're just there so that we can document it in one place. This, um, presentation will be going on the website so that anybody who chooses to see it can see it. Um, these were, so the, the first screen were the required questions. These were the four, there's one four-part question that was, um, proposed by the Library of Virginia to help local libraries, uh, do strategic planning. But I just thought they were really good questions of what, what do you think about your community? For my own fault, they were asked slightly differently from the electronic form to the paper form. I, on paper form, combined thirteen A and thirteen B into one question. Next, please. So demographic data, um, whatever it was, two weeks ago, I suppose, we walked through this just a little bit. So we asked age, gender, race, and the race, um, you had the option to check other. If you checked other, you had the option to identify your provisional identity. And a very open-ended question of what is your ethnicity with no friend or something at all, you told me. Um, we want to know how long you lived in the county and where you live in the county. Next, please. So, on average, the average respondent is an over sixty-five-year-old female, white female who's lived in the county for over twenty years and lives in the Palmyra district. That's just their average. Um, again, the breakout of how long folks have lived here and where they live. Reasonably evenly distributed, except for Palmyra and Port Union, we'll, off balance there, but reasonably. The years lived in the county, not quite as evenly distributed. Picked up a little bit from the last time she did it, the eleven to twenty-year-long residents had a little bit better showing than we did. And I didn't say, but if you have any questions on any of them, but I'm going here very quickly, please let me know. Next, please.
I love this and Lake Monticello news.
We promoted the heck out of it everywhere. So it went out to Lake Monticello, both the element, um, the Lake Monticello news and the Illinois. It's the house that been that, um, it was sent to the double A C P. It was sent to, I believe, F L B P, provided, um, to every church in the county that I have contact information for. It was spread bottom line. So the question of what is your race, which is an interesting question. We did not have it on, I'm just saying so, I'm sorry, we didn't have it on the two thousand seventeen survey. I thought it was important. Some folks on the survey disagreed with that. So, and the top box up there, those are the categories that you had to choose from. And it was a required question on the electronic survey. And even on the paper survey, everything that was required electronically got answered on the paper. So there was no discrepancy between what was required and not answered. These are categories that have been, um, got my notes up here. The nineteen ninety-seven Office of Management and Budget revisions to the standards for classification of federal data on race and ethnicity. So these are standard categories that have been around for a while, except for other. Talk about other in a moment. So these are the categories that I use, and if you chose other, you have a place to then tell me what's new and what's not. But of those categories, this is how people answer. So they answer as one or the other or both, with one person said, absolutely everything. Um, what I learned, I'm looking at this. These categories do not capture who our Latino, Latinx, or Hispanic residents might be. There is nowhere in this that captures it without being explicitly told by the residents who they choose, who they feel themselves to be. A better way to ask is with these categories that have been proposed by best research. I know nothing about this group other than what I've read about them. They are a international survey. They're much more than that, but they do consume an international level. And I think these are a much better way. But aren't others? That's my mistake. Um, so we captured that a little bit better, and when we do this again in hopefully two years, I will, unless there's a better way to do it in two years, we use these categories. Next, please. I think this is an important slide. Except for the black or African American category, otherwise we stack up pretty closely to who we are as a county, our makeup is. Um, this is a little bit high. Uh, the two thousand and ten demographics from the U S Census data is about eighty percent. Black, African, American is about fifteen percent. Otherwise, we're pretty close. There's no way to know if the six point two percent, uh, prefer not to say is included in the black or African Americans. We don't know those things. Next, please. And this, ginormousness is, uh, is what the respondents told me they are. This is who they are. There was no intention of this being a, a squish into categories. It was tell me who you are, overwhelmingly European. I particularly, I can't see it because it's hiding behind there, but there's one over here that says, this is a pointless question. Stop referring to race. And there's one that explicitly told me this is a racist question.
There it is, right in the middle, four from the bottom.
Yes, ma'am?
The middle one, um, go to your right one, one time. That's it, right there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Um, there was also, well, I guess. So I, I wanted to speak really briefly about that. If this were a job application, I would absolutely agree that does not need to be on there. And I'm going to use my eighty twenty saying, if eighty percent of the residents in the county respond that everything is hunky-dory and it's all great, and twenty percent of the population says, everything stinks, do better. I need to know who that twenty percent is. And if that twenty percent who said everything stinks is eighty percent not white, that's important to know. And we won't know that if you don't ask the question. It's just fascinating to me, and I mentioned at the beginning, any data that you see is pulled directly from the survey. So I didn't collect typos, but there will be lots of typos there.
Yeah, I got one. Yeah, it's been a while. I wanted to rub that in. I thought I got you.
That might have been my typo. That's okay. I don't mind you catching me on those. So, let's see. I think that covered it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, quality of life questions. Um, no surprise whatsoever that in this survey, most people prefer to receive their news notification from sending an email because they took it electronically. Only nine people said they don't have internet at home, so again, no surprise since they took this. There was nothing surprising about that, but it was good to capture and sort of get it out there that you care, that you're getting it. Next, please. Um, the rating of, excuse me, um, how Flavanna is as a place to live, and then the rating of the county services, uh, some changes from the last time you did it. Uh, we had a few higher percentages last time. We had not asked about shopping in twenty seventeen. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody, but that one's low. Um, go to the next one. Yeah. So comparing the twenty seventeen on the left to twenty twenty responses, you can see a little bit of change. I'm chopping some of these up to COVID, that learned and done a little bit. Live went up a little bit, that's good. Uh, play went up a little bit. Raised children surprised me, but it dropped ten percent each one. Going to get it like COVID-related, don't really know. Looking for some of the comments, retirement, that also made a little bit of sense, uh, for people who are stuck at home, didn't have a lot of opportunities. I run a business, stayed reasonably the same, shopping, first time you've asked, so that was at least us on there. And work popped up a little bit, so that was good. And we're talking about it right now. I'm not going to run through these all, um, except to say that we did have, I think, one more, seventy-five percent or higher the last time. So there was a little bit of a decrease in the satisfaction, good and excellent. Didn't put fair responses on here, but there were. This is just the county-wide totals of what I gave you last week. You had the district breakdown, so I wanted you to have votes of that, so that's not happened as well. We are not going through those. Green is highlighted just to show that's one of the fair. Uh, got there, next. And again, rating Flavanna comes out of performance in the same way, but don't know excellent, fair, good and poor. Next. The word, it's our middle of the road. We're not the fourth there. There are some interesting things. Being transparent in the decision-making process, I feel like we're pretty darn transparent. So then it becomes, how do we, how do we promote how things get done? I think maybe there's some just don't know how things actually get done, and so you can do a better job at promoting that for your kids. Um, honestly, um, name terms there. Welcoming resident engagement and providing opportunities to certain local boards, commissions and committees. Surprising a little bit that they were lower than, that they are as low as they are, because I feel like we do a really good job. But there were comments about, um, if you had a difference of opinion, you didn't really get invited to do stuff. If you had a fresh or innovative idea and weren't really listened to, I think all of that's really important. So it's, it's a thing to be, that. Again, the county-wide totals, you already have a district breakdown in the package from last weekend. All of this is on the website. Everything that I gave you last week was printed in there or was compiled into the packet and was online already. This presentation will be there tomorrow.
I will say, in terms of presentation, but that, from the previous slide to this slide, doesn't seem to kind of really give out, right? Because if you take a look and say, well, I, honest, right, uh, forty-seven percent, right? Remember, if I go to the slide up here, you see that you have, only thirty-four percent, or thirty-five percent would, that are saying. Thirty five percent would that are saying, well, actually ten percent are saying.
Yeah, unless we put yes, because the don't knows are not engaged or not aware. Yes.
So they just, you look at the previous slide and you think fifty percent, fifty percent of the population thinks we're not. But really only ten percent thinks that we're not.
Good point.
And, and, and that's why it's too.
Yeah, yes. Next. And I am always open to ways we do this better and tell the story better. Because I think that's where it'd be. That's where it is. It's hard to tell that story. Um. So maybe this is better. I put everything on the screen and then just highlighted where the highest percentage fell within me. So you can. You can see it better because it's all on one screen, but. Confidence in the county government is good all the way through. Under twenty percent. And fifty percent. But. Anyway, that is what it is. Uh, the same thing for the next.
She's confident that's been moved out from Rockhampton. It's high. This is a different group. But that's a different era, different, different resources, different commanding. And that's why.
That makes you. Did you go on the other or the same?
Same. Well, I, I went forward.
Well. We particularly looked at Fort Union. If you look at the excellence. So perhaps on Columbia actually had the highest percentage of respondents who put excellence.
Yeah, probably everybody that's available to you.
Yeah, pretty close. But. But the other three, particularly Fort Union. And that's exactly what some of those questions were asked. Who are the people who are not here for the show?
Right.
And, and I think that more goes back to some of the comments too. We look at the comments and see where they come from.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Same thing. Um, are we moving in the right direction, wrong direction, the stance, those that don't know? That's a lot of standing still. And we have. So that's my point about how we tell that story. I think. Maybe we don't treat our unborn as much as we could, but maybe we're also not telling it in a forum. That actually gets out to people except for who are looking at the internet or the website or something else. So. Maybe it's not that we are in state still. It's that we're not getting the word out enough of what we're doing.
And so we don't, and we have a lot of things in the works too right now that. Like I said, this, you, you have to take this in context a little bit. Some of the survey came mid pandemic and, and I'll be really interested to see what these results are in two years from now. Comparing some of the same things. How did, how did people being at home and, and, and some of the stuff affect people's answers and.
This was October to December. So we were not employed at Christmas yet. So we weren't at the post holiday pandemic. High, but. We're probably at a point of much frustration and tired being home and missing people involved in it. So I absolutely think it colors. Priorities. Uh, you saw the gigantic long list that I included. These are priorities as. Stuck together by me. So kick that for what it is. If somebody. Miss growth, taxes, jobs. Dispo responsibility. There was another one. Revenue, I think, was the other one. They could all go together. They might have been separate things. So if somebody just said taxes, I'll just count it as a tax. But business, maybe they put something else. Maybe they also said infrastructure and I don't know. So. Take that one.
When you make up racism, racial equity, I was. If everything is fine on in the world, I was really surprised and happy to get that stuff. Because I don't think it would have been up there if, if you see any of that in the last two years. Thank you all that are real conscious, conscious about those things now.
And not in this question, but I think in the, um. The question thirteen, the four part question saw a lot of zoning, land use and. Code type questions primarily around rural development. So maybe not reflected here, but definitely in that question. So a lot of this.
And then just before we go on, the good thing with getting some of this and getting more of a detailed look at this, we're planning on coming back at the next four meeting with the strategic initiatives just for you to review. So. We're hoping that some of the, this in here after you've read it will maybe color some of your opinion on what needs to be in strategic initiatives. And some of them I think we addressed because we did talk a lot about zoning and ordinance type things, which we're also discussing here as well. So.
Wait, can you just click this just for a second? And this is just for folks that may be watching on, um, at home for YouTube. I, I just want to. Oh, as it didn't down enough. Uh, this is just to show, um. How much there was that was received, not to go through it point by point, but just to show. There's a lot. And this is sorted in your packet, um, by district. And I meant to mention this at the beginning for any folks at home and also for you. Every respondent got a number. So as you move through the different documents that were written down, you can track these two based on their respondent number. There is nothing, um. That will be put online that has any person identification, but you can look across it all. And, uh. I don't know. I want to see what one fifty five has to say about something else. We can go back and see what's up something else. If that's all I'm going to show. Same thing with additional comments. Um, people were. Very thoughtful in the way that they responded. Um. There are only a few people who have had, you know, the lava packs that ran up to many. Um. Go ahead and just leave for additional comments, just for the same reason, just to show. The amount of information, uh, again, sorted by district and with the respondent numbers so that you can. These are very thoughtful answers. People took the time to do this and really asked. And respondent number one nineteen took a whole lot. Yeah, it was a lot. Anyway, just to show that these were. We got good information. We, we better, we, we didn't get some information I would like to have gotten, but we got a lot. The optional questions. Boy, we need to have a time go through these. There, there were some really. Where they let us know what they thought, what's missing, what's great, what they'd like to have. Um.
So we're kind of, how are we going to use this?
How would you like to use this?
Well. If you have. Categories. Departments, have they looked at what people said about their.
I haven't sent it to you.
Like talks and recommendations.
They will. That's the plan. The schools have already asked if they can. And what was it? You were talking, there's a, somebody who's not involved with us who started looking at it. Was it the, the senior housing folks? Who would see somebody who is not.
Yes, actually, actually, one, one of the individuals that came out for the senior, that we met with for the senior housing, they were going through, looking at the survey online and they were looking to see what were some of the. Uh, can, you know, some of the interests and, and criticisms and, and whatever citizens have said.
Now, like on page fifteen, the paragraph, you said rating Savannah County as a place to learn. That was fifty nine percent. So.
Fifty nine responses.
Oh, it's, I thought I was one. Okay, now, all right, if there are fifty nine, it says fifty nine percent.
Oh, let me, oh, 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 I was like, yes, I'm sorry. I was on a different place. Yes.
Fifty nine percent said that it's a good place to learn. Do you have anything else to back up why they said this is a good place to learn?
Only if they included it in this question or in the additional comments. No, there isn't any other place for that. And I don't remember seeing any comments that highlighted why they thought it was a good place, but I do remember seeing several. That told us what they thought was, um. Deficient and.
How, how would somebody at the survey? Separate schools.
Yeah. Or is, right, unless they put it.
They have that disconnect, right? Yeah. And, and, and that's how some of the questions are too. I mean, because you had a lot, as Kelly said, like, like taxes. You had some people said lower taxes. You had a few people said, we would be happy with our taxes higher for more services. You know, just things like that or. Or economic development or whatever it is. There's, there's kind of two sides to this.
And that's where this question and the additional comments really came in. As you follow them across there with their respondent number, okay, they said economic development, but maybe as you root on, they mean stop it.
Yes.
Or maybe they meant, there, there was one in there somewhere that said, I'm going to paraphrase because it was a little bit snarky. But basically that folks need to get over the fact that this is no longer a strictly rural community.
And it's not because that's something bad. It's rural.
There's a whole lot more than that.
There weren't. Yeah.
Yeah, my guess is that people probably lived in this Booker's in my district. They said it was rural.
It was spread pretty weird. Yes, probably most did.
Probably a good percentage of them.
Kind of thought. Anyway, lots and lots of good info on that one.
The one you had about the, um, playing in the county. That's probably strictly COVID related because people had to get outside. You know, if you wanted to do something, at the parks, you got to. People, you know, one of the comments, you heard people utilizing the parks more than they probably have before because. They're stuck in the house. What else is to do? You're not going to the charles necessarily. So they're utilizing our great ass.
And the other thing is, um, comparing twenty seventeen and twenty twenty. Uh, we fell in twenty twenty. Uh, but I think if you don't fall significantly, five, ten percent. We just stay the same because you have learning sixty two in seventeen and fifty nine in twenty twenty. To me, that's not significant.
And also we had two hundred more responses this time, which definitely affected that.
Yeah, which, you know, the higher, the higher respondents, the more, you know, tactically, the more accurate survey you get. I mean.
I mean, you'd also have that little thing says plus or minus three and a half percent or something.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's something that we really enjoyed. I mean, or I really enjoyed that we did is the E K. It was when we did those little beauty trip things I talked about. We were around and I had never gone to Shire National Area. We're a beautiful place to go walk. I don't mean, you know, get out there and enjoy it. It's warm.
That brings up an interesting point for some of these when you read through is the. I don't want to say lack of understanding, but just general not knowing of what's a county function and service and what is somebody else's. So there was, there were many. Um, comments about, you know. General broad thing, fix Lake Monticello. Well, we don't have any.
Fix, fix our rates, fix our rates of Lake Monticello.
I saw that one of the things was talk, talk about.
Yeah.
It's awkward.
Several of those. Water bills, aqua, the lake, the roads.
And if you don't get into the, to the Savannah County leadership class and take the bus to, well, you, you, you don't know that that's Savannah County. So we need to be able to open that up more in the future. If there's general script, period, obviously, because a whole lot of history here that we don't know that. How do you find that?
To Mrs. Booker's point, it'd be interesting if the faculty could. That's new people to take the survey first and then after.
Yeah.
Get a sense as to. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a very hard. You know, it's a good survey. Some things could be changed, but that would give us a, in the interim, I think it's current, you know, ask whether it's the. You know, survey of year, but that will be class.
Yeah.
So here's a snapshot. It allows us to chart on questions. Yeah, that'll do. That's good. And, and we change that response because you have residents who say, oh, I understand that I was not part of it now.
Right.
You know, or, you know. One of the things that caught me in the comments, a lot of comments, especially in relationships, passes. Was that a lot of people, though taxes and businesses, in my opinion, a lot of people felt like. Businesses were either not there and a little bit not contributing, right? Right? Because they don't, they're being taxed based. That's, that's a strategy that we have right now. But it also reflects itself in residents saying, why am I being over this burden? The ratio is off from that standpoint, so.
There were lots of question or lots of comments. Didn't surprise me, but I get this big batch of, I don't know, some that said, uh, you only have a voice if you like the light. And then there were like. There were like folks who said, um. Basically they're being pooped on because they're into light. So it's an interesting who's, who your perception of who you are in the country based on where you live.
But you know, it would be, it would be wonderful if we could afford a real analysis, go through this. And come back with a conclusion. This is what the survey said. Is it possible? Is it too much in here to do that? Do we have? Organizations or companies that can take this? Because right now we have a whole lot to stop you. And I, if I had to do a strategic plan of, you know, we're doing that. I don't know what threats I'm hit around. I wouldn't know really which thing is the most important. And I know you only have five or some people, but that's a good segment that, that.
That's right.
But, um. No, because I don't think we can summarize it and put it in a meaningful.
No, and I don't, and I don't think, and I think it's more, you know, what, what are some of the maybe, um, reoccurring comments that you see, especially if you see an overwhelming amount of, is, does that tell you something? Yeah. And that's. Exactly. Because you can ask the question, do you think we should have low taxes to attract businesses? You're probably going to get a response this way, which might conflict some of the other responses. Or do you think it's more important than the tax burden? That's a meaningful response at that point. Tells us really what a sentiment box. And like I said, with, with this kind of just being a two year comparison. I'm, I'm really interested to see what, what the, the, the next, the next one looks like to see where, where all this kind of falls into place with having, having COVID in the picture.
Well, we don't, we wouldn't. You wouldn't necessarily. In two years do the same thing.
No, so, um, I think this question would definitely not be on there in two years, but maybe, um, a much more pointed question if you ask.
I, I think to see, I think the gauge kind of what's, what's happening. I think there's, it would be good to have some continuity in the questions to see the trend of, of how things are going.
I think those first ones are really the, yeah, the, the trend line questions.
And you could probably send this to the analyst and he could tell you exactly how to get to what you're.
Okay, you're right.
You've done a really good job.
It's thirty, it's like thirty thousand on the low end.
Yeah, when you put this on the next slide, is there space for comments?
Um, we always have comments available through iTwoSense.
Okay.
Or connect at, um.
Yeah.
SavannahCounty.org.
Yeah.
And I get quite a few for that. So, yeah, I'll make sure that we have contact information. I am also, um. Can you pull into the folder where all of the survey docs are in the packet? I want to show you the, the whole spreadsheet I worked with. Again, we're not, not to go through it. It's the very first one. I just want to show you this. Um, I'm putting this on the website. So. This is fifty six columns. Five hundred and thirty eight rows. If I'm sitting around gathered at home and I want to know more about my county, I can sort by any of these columns. I can pull it by districts, by gender, by age. Uh, I can look at just the comments. So this is going to go on the website. So there's no identifying to make a personal identification. Again, everybody's got a respondent number. You can see when it was, um, and at the very, well, all the way back to the top here. Um, we did get these duplicates. So I marked which were the duplicates because I thought that was important. I had five hundred percent responses in the motel theaters, like five hundred and four. I thought it was important that you saw where those duplicates were. So you can see their exact. Um.
Kelly, you did a fantastic job.
I just think it's really important for anybody that wants to know anything, this we should put up W P. To, to. To to delve in. There's so much, there is so much there. So anyway, I think I'm, I think I'm just.
Well, that may also be able to help you shop for.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're done, bud. You have one left since question.
I think that's it, yeah.
There we go.
And that's it. I, there is so, my dear, I have so enjoyed reading, um, putting it together, playing with it, probably obsessing over it a little more than I needed to to get it to you. But um, there is so much here, so much here. So I'll, I will provide to the departments, to schools and anybody else who wants to see it, um, all of that information to be mined or whatever they would like to see. So are there any other questions?
I'm very surprised at what is the most important issue facing UG County in the next five years. I'm surprised that some of those categories are so low. Activities and services alone.
Yeah. And again, I think you have to go into the comments to really understand. That was a required, I believe that was a required um question for on the electronics, but I don't know, like, were people tired at some point? Did they like tell us anything?
Yeah.
So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will be very happy to not look at it for a little while.
Yahoo.
Great. Good job.
All right. Now we will go forth and send agenda. D, minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-one. E, minutes of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. F, FY twenty-one, Palma Rescue Insurance Claim, two thousand sixteen, four, two, four fifty, ambulance, been number five, two oh five, Mr. Goddard. G, FY twenty-one, dam, property damage insurance, Bay Corp., two fourteen, Commons Boulevard, Mr. McGodder. Is there anything we want to pull?
I just have a comment on number D. Uh, it said that I'm absent and I think I was on Zoom with you guys.
Yeah, ma'am, you were there.
Yeah. Oh, on the adoption of the agenda.
Yes. Yeah, we we will, we will fix that.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the um consent agenda.
Well, second. All right, motion made by Ms. Seeger, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Ms. Seeger?
Aye.
Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver? Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passed five zero. Unfinished business, local allocations for federal cares, coronavirus relief fund, Mr. Dahl.
Yeah, I just have one thing that I'm gonna, you know, as we've been going through these meetings here, and you know, I'm not sure how much longer we're going to be here, but there's been lots of questions and concerns about the uh, about the sound and 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 things like that in this area. You know, it's been, it's been echoed for, you know, for both board meetings and planning commission meetings as well. So um, we met with one uh, with one contractor, we're going to be with another contractor. Uh, well, assuming that that the board approves this, and and we're anticipating using careers for this. Since we wouldn't have to be getting the sound equipment unless we were pushed out of our regular space. We were looking at getting some better surround, some better sound in this space specifically, um, which would include some microphones, include some speakers in the ceiling, um, and some mixing equipment. So for one, for those in here, you can hear better. And then secondly, for those that are listening at home too, they can hear better. You know, and and again, this would be good for both planning, commission meetings and board meetings. And in addition, once we decide we want to, you know, move out of the space and we go elsewhere, all these microphones, the microphones that we purchased can be transferable, the speakers and and sound equipment in the ceilings. Uh, would, uh, Ms. Hoffman, I talked to her and she met out here, she'd be able to use that stuff in this room when they do movies and other events and stuff. So like I said, we think it's a, we think it's a good use of funds, and this is just kind of a, a list of some of the major components and and just a a look of what we're looking at. But anyway, we were going to kind of bring this forward to the board at the next meeting for formal approval. And and again, we're we're anticipating that this would be a terrorist fund, just because we wouldn't have to do it otherwise, um, so.
Uh, Mr. Dahl, I've got to tell you, this, what you're talking about right now is so necessary. Um, the people that are not in the room with you, we can't hear what several of you are saying. Uh, particularly, uh, Mr. O'Brien is very hard to understand. But I can hear people who are on their, on Zoom, but not in the actual room. So I think that this is really well spent and we need it.
I agree.
All right, well.
Are these wireless mics?
They're not. They're wired. Now, we could go wireless and, but the wireless, so so the the wired mics are around two to three hundred dollars a piece. If you go wireless, they're about, um, I think they're about another, they're probably three times as much, two to three times as much. So, I mean, if 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 the board thinks that wireless is a better solution, now meeting with, meeting with one vendor, there's pros and cons factor, so.
And those owls don't take a separate mic that?
No, and and actually, and I don't know if Andy's up, well, I think Andy's on here. He could speak to this because we can still utilize the owls in this. Um, so we'll still be able to do the video. The owls will still be a part of this whole kind of setup. But again, it'll it'll allow for better, better audio throughout. Um, Andy, are you on the call right now?
Yes.
And do you want to talk a little bit about, you know, as far as some of the sound components and and owls and?
Well, we're, we're hoping that we can still utilize the owls, but I did bring up the point that because they're putting the, this, this first bit uh proposal was putting speakers in the ceiling. And the owls rely on targeting in where the speakers, you know, where the person is speaking from in order to 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 focus on them. That that might be problematic. Now, the the person that gave us the first bid said that he thinks he can work out a sweet spot so we can still use the owls, which are not working the greatest tonight, as you can tell, the main screen is just blank. But um, that's the intent, yes, is to maintain the owls. Um, and everything else, we would have a an actual wired microphone in front of everybody around the table that's there now with room to expand in case we had stuff like joint school board meetings that we've had in the past.
All right. Do do we have a motion by Kate?
Well, and there's no motion. This is more of a nod that do we think this is a good idea?
Sure. I think you've got the three already.
And 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 does the board have any preference of, again, it would be a a cost increase if you wanted to go wireless for the setup, but.
There's four of us sitting here. When you say three people, thank.
Ms. Seeger said it was a good idea, you and Mr. Weaver, ma'am.
Is that all?
From Mr. O'Brien, I don't even need to say anything.
Yeah, we we figured we'd go wired and then, and then sometimes wired just provides some less interference and then some less complications.
Looks very similar to what we had over in the building.
Yep. Yeah, and and you know, there's like a little on off switch on the microphone and, you know, it would just be a good setup for for future board meetings. And again, we can, once we are not in this space, we can, you know, utilize it elsewhere. And then Ms. Hoffman can utilize the speakers.
Sounds like we don't know, not hit, hit, nod, nod him.
So.
Oh, and if I've been eight.
Well, we'll, we're back, we're back a formal proposal. We're just waiting on one other vote, so we can hopefully move forward with this sooner or later.
All right. Anything else under unfinished business about new business? All right, hearing none, I will now open the second round of public comment. Anyone wish to address the board, please state your name, address, keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board at this time? Press star six if you'd like to unmute yourself. Seeing nobody unmuting themselves, I will now close the second round of public comment.
Oops, I saw them raising their hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry about that. Um, I just wanted to uh wholeheartedly endorse the idea of getting some A V equipment. Um, as a member of the public who likes to watch the meetings, um, it is basically impossible to see any of the supervisors in the, in the room, particularly who's talking. Um, so it makes it very hard to follow the discussion. Um, so I I just, if I can speak for the public, that's really necessary, and I hope it happens.
Thank you.
Payment address, please.
Sorry, my name is Kelsey Cowgar. Uh, my address is sixty Woodlawn Drive, two two nine six three. Call my reference.
Thank you so much. I saw you nod your head when Mrs. Seeger was making her statements. I hope you were in agreement.
Yes, indeed. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I will now close the second round of public comment. All righty, folks, and we do not have a closed session tonight, but we are going straight into our work session.
I'm a little disappointed we're not going in closed session. There were some things that that I thought maybe was pending within a week.
And uh.
That we might hear something back? Yeah, because, you know, we're right on the verge of some things, so.
I'm guessing that nobody reached back down the first.
They're still on the verge.
I think, I don't think they've reached out. I think we're still waiting to hear replies.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you got me with this picture because I'm trying to figure out where that phone is. Anyway, no. Think I've pitched that one. Nope, haven't pitched that one. Hold on. All righty, uh, we're now going ahead into our budget session. Is county department budget proposals and C I P, Mr. Dahl?
Yes, so so really, this is a chance for the board to to ask some specific questions for for departments if if they have them. Um, and 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 a chance for for the department heads to to present if if they think that there's maybe something that they're budgeting to. Uh, Ms. Twisdale, she has a little presentation about one of her items that I did at fun, uh, in the budgets. I'll open up hers first and let, let her uh go forward first. This was, I just want to let, tell her to do a little.
With my budget, in my budget, um, this year, I just got an accounting position for the finance department. Um, I don't like positions being in finance, you know, I, I understand the way county finance works. So I just want to give you a little bit of heads up of what we're doing in finance. Um, due to changing mandates and priority, like federal and state reporting has increased a hundred percent over the previous year, we're now tracking reporting twice what we have been tracking and recording previously. There are new audit requirements and still reporting requirements for care funding that are going to continue to require extensive time in excess of previous levels through at least December of year twenty twenty-two. When cares came out, a lot of localities thought, oh, I'll just spend this money on relit, because they're never going to check. Well, they're going to check. Um, the state has come back and said they're going to audit everyone that received care funds down to the line item level. I'm a little concerned about that because we were very careful about how we spent our care funds. But the time it's going to take to pull this together for auditors is just going to be after long. There were new mandated changes on W two's chair, government mandated code sixteen to nine forty-one, reporting succeeded staff coming. A payroll person does that, sure, it has to pull time down, and and this is a whole lot of work for her. Excellent. There was also a new higher estimated changes in ten ninety-nine reporting this year, um, going forward. We used to report ten ninety-nines on what was called ten ninety-nine M miscellaneous. This year, they added a ten ninety-nine N D C non-put compensation, which required us to get through all of our vendor files. And going forward, we're going to have to update how we report ten ninety-nines. Lots of cases have been implemented, which is a good thing. Um, when we cut checks now, I'll go to the bank to verify the checks that we cut are legitimately our checks. This really helps against fraud. That's also the first step we needed in the A C F, A C H payment reporting. So now we're working to get A C H put in place. Very time consuming. You have to send out letters to every vendor you have. They have to send you their banking information. There's one they have to sign off on. A lot of work is going to go into that. Um, grant reporting is more complex. The drug court grant, I mean, that sounds like an easy thing when they propose it, it's a nightmare. It's extremely time consuming. There are four different systems. The Batty Grant has a lot of reporting. It's just, you know, I I think it's great when we, when we try to get more grants, that's nice. But somebody's got to mitigate for this. Somebody has to report on these things, and somebody has to have a financial wherewithal to understand reporting these grants. That's getting a little away from us because it's kind of business. Um, we now have another requisition we do for the E Q funding client. Um, currently, the payroll specialist is also handling the EMS cost recovery. And that's become work time consuming because we changed vendors. We're running into a few little issues that she's having a great career.
Remember when they came up, when they were talking about they had a grant, I asked the question. Who is the exact man you said? I think it had somebody who would help them.
Well.
Or was that helping the price of grass?
That there, there's a person that handles it when they're in that will submit information to us to them. This survivor is handling the injury into all the systems and reenforce, and that's something. So they handle sending us the information. But then we're having to report the reaction and reverse the information. And that quite then. Um, so now I I have our our A P person for a note of news. I'm sorry, payroll, who is fabulous. Um, she's also doing complex county and school reconciliation through all of C S A, along with cost recovery, payroll, and all these other weekly plans. A P is working on the A C H project and the ten ninety-nine changes. There's a new gathering announcement coming out this year for leases, but we have to report that completely different chapter than we ever have before, because we still haven't put in lease unfortunately this year. Um, and then there's possibilities of new work to that funding prep like we do, that we're talking about from C I P. We also have a major Mantis upgrade coming this summer. We're going to have to, everyone that usually uses the desktop version of Mantis, which our financial system is going to have to go to the dashboard version. It's more of an internet-based system, but it's a big change. It's a big change for everyone who's going to be doing that. So there's going to be a ton of testing and training to ensure the system is going to work. Excellent. It's a goal in finding, it's to complete each fiscal year with an unmodified audit and receive the excellent financial reporting award for the G O A, which we have done. Um, we've been in the office working for almost the entire pandemic because there's a lot of work we can't be permitted. We can't issue checks all the time. There's payrolls that we can't be permitted. We're, we're in there. Um, and everybody's been working hard. And I do want to recognize Tori, Cindy, Kim, the women's for all the work that they do. I mean, that by sport, that could list forever, so that thing together, I mean, it's a lot of work. Um, the position is, uh, salary is forty-eight thousand dollars. I think it's a little low, but that that's the salary that can be targeted for this position with benefits of sixty-five mine. I did reach out to Green, us, and Culpeper, and Luisa, those are the financial records. I typically talk to them about things that are going on. Um, Luisa's discussing the possibility of need of a grants person. Green is requesting a grant person. Culpeper has a special project separate person. Madison's not doing any more. I'm not suggesting we need a full-time grants person, but what I'm suggesting is the more grants we take on, the more time we're going to have to go with that. And so therefore, part of this position could go for that as well as reconciliation of all the, all the other structures. Um, Captain, fair, you know, I get it. He didn't put this in his budget, um, but this is my time to tell you why I did. And so that's what I wanted to do today.
Are there any questions? Ms. Seeger, did you have any questions, Mr. Twisdale? Okay. Thank you. You got yourself on. That's all right. You're good. I read no.
I didn't want to cough on you guys.
No, I think, I think it's, uh, it's, she made her case. It's a strong case.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just so just a, so, so just a few other updates. As I said, I didn't have any other department heads that wanted to advocate for anything that wasn't, was not in their budget. But again, if the board has any questions, we can do that. We're going to go into C I, C I P really to kind of discuss that. But before we do that, I just want to give the board a few updates. Um, so one, we got our insurance back, our insurance quote back. So we have about five point seven percent budgeted in, in the county administrator's proposed budget. They came back at eight point four percent. So what that means is um, we've got ninety-two thousand dollars in the budget right now. I think that if I remember correctly, eight point four percent comes out to about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So what I'm going to do, I've already been working on some different insurance proposals, you know, does, does the, does the county want to pay the same that they're paying right now? does, does the, does the county want to pay the same that they're paying right now and, and have the employee eat all the increase, which means then we've got ninety-two thousand that can go back into the budget? Or does, you know, or, or vice versa, you know, is the employees even a hundred and thirty-five? Does the county even a hundred and thirty-five? Or is there something within that mix? Um, I've gone through and I've got, I've, I've been working on a few different proposals. One that keeps us, keeps us at ninety-two thousand dollars, um, which, which has some par share in between county and, and staff for the insurance increase. And then, and then there's, there's one other option too. I'll be coming back to the board at the next meeting to provide that information in a little more, little more clear though. Like I said, you just kind of got some of that. We're going over that today. In addition from the general assembly, um, they've been, uh, a, a, a lot of the compensation pieces have been moving through. And I, I know Ms. Mabe sent you all an email regarding some things regarding social services. So really from the state, uh, from the state side, from state-supported employees, whether it's social services, uh, constitutional officers, and even a school is being proposed for, um, for constitutional officers, a five percent increase in fiscal year twenty-two. Um, so if you remember right now in my budget, I've got a two percent increase. Every one percent is, is about, is a hundred and one thousand dollars. So, um, you know, there's, well, let me, let me back up. Every one percent for all county staff is a hundred and one thousand dollars. Um, now, there's going to be some, there would be some reimbursements back from the state and we don't know what that number is and from social services too. And, and from social services was theirs five percent.
Five percent. They got rid of the one point five bonus, but they did say five percent.
Yeah. And, and there's also something within, um, within, uh, the proposal for social services is also to increase, um, their minimum pay bands. If you remember from Ms. Mabe's presentation, that was, that was discussed and it looks like that's going to be the case now. Now that could or could not have, uh, ha- have an effect on what we're doing. You know, if, if all our employees are above that minimum threshold, well, then we may not have to increase it, but I don't know if that's going to be the case. So we're going to have to go back through and see where that, uh, where that kind of falls into play. Also, um, for the schools, um, the schools and U S people, the schools.
The schools are five percent are the biennial, which means since we gave a one percent raise last year, we would have to give a four percent raise this year to make up the five percent. They also dropped it. They originally had put a bonus in there too, but they dropped that. So it's five percent, but that one percent we have for it.
And, and, and the one thing with the schools of two, you have to remember generally in every budget year, they, they may have a step or they have a cola and usually it's, it's the bigger of the two. So, so one employee could have one percent, one employee could have two percent. Um, so, you know, from the school standpoint, I'm not sure how they would go through and say, you know, they would al- almost have to go employee by employee that says, well, if you got the equivalent of two percent this year and this five percent is the biennial, then maybe you get a three percent this year. Or you just go across the board. But again, um, they're looking at a five percent as well, which includes the current fiscal year we're in plus fiscal year twenty-two. And did they give it a, a dollar amount for what that equates to them?
She, um, Ms. Gillum had said that I kept to pull it up, but she said that would be an additional two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Addition to their current plus. I think of that.
Probably about four to five hundred thousand.
We, we know that their SOQ positions only cover like a third of what has to be paid. I think it works out to where they say, oh, we're giving a two percent raise. They pay a third of it. We pay two thirds of it.
Yeah. So, so again, there's, there's, you know, there's some, there's some, uh, there's some proposals from the state for a five percent kind of, you know, you know, state-supported positions, uh, countywide. Again, you know, talking about, is it, is it, is it across the board or is it only for those, for those particular positions?
They've decided on the five percent.
Yeah. And, and, and we don't know, we don't, we don't necessarily know what that reimbursement back to the locality is going to be. They haven't issued any of that information, uh, from the comp board or from social services. We could make some, some, some estimates because usually they don't come out with, well, usually they have some preliminary numbers.
They're, they're behind.
They're behind.
But you're, you're a hundred thousand per one percent. Is that assuming they store it or pass it or?
That's if we have it all, or is that all of us?
No. So, so the, yes. So the hundred, so the hu- the, the hundred and one thousand per every one percent for just county staff, that's for us paying the whole bit now. Now let's just say, let's just say the board says, well, two percent's in the budget. I'm just going to say five percent. Say the board says five percent. Well, that's an additional three hundred and three thousand. Now it'll probably be lower than three hundred, yeah, three thousand because there's going to be additional, uh, reimbursement from the state for social services from the comp board. Now that's county. And then from the schools piece, um, and like I said, we'd have to get more formal confirmation from them, but.
Wouldn't we do a four percent then? We did the one percent last year.
So, so, so that's where on, on the county side, it's, if, if you look at what they're saying for, for the co- uh, constitutional officers, it's not talked in biennium.
Just the school.
Just the schools that's talked in biennium.
But they, her, her email said the general assembly is now considering a five percent quota for local supported state employees as well as teachers and other state employees. And she didn't know what the local match was, but the general assembly has already approved the minimum pay ban increases as she presented. We don't know whether the, Dr. Simpson.
Yeah, I think since then the state has said that.
I have this note.
Since, since she sent that note. I think that was next two or three weeks.
Yeah, they, it's official now.
Okay, she said this on, uh, March one. Whether, so that may be.
Um, I've got something I'd like to say. Um, I know we tend to give everybody the same amount, but I think when the money's coming from the state, that you can't always do that. Um, I would hate for us to pass up the state money and not pay the social services what they're, they deserve. Some of the people that the social services are working for twenty-five thousand dollars and they have a really tough, tough job. Um, I, I just think we have to maybe start, uh, looking at where the sources come from and, um, not necessarily do it across the board.
So my only, well, my only, uh, thing against that, and like I said, that's certainly a, a board decision, is, you know, there are, there have been years where the county wanted to give more and the state wanted to give less. Um, so that kind of goes back to, you know, are you, are you going on the side that you want to go with when it, when it's more beneficial? And that's.
So the thing, that's the argument that we had last time, is that they were going back and forth and picking and choosing which one better served.
Yes. There, there was a time where the county was going to give, and I'm just going to use that example, maybe it was like three percent and they were only getting like one and a half percent from the state. So does that mean they only get one and a half percent of it? And, and that was kind of the, that was kind of the argument. If you do it across the board for all county employees, then it's equitable across all, for all, all staff.
Sounds like that's what the state's trying to do.
But, but again. Yeah.
What's inflation running now?
So inflation this year, goodness, it was, I, I think in my budget proposal, um, for the previous year, I want to say it was, one of the numbers I saw, I want to say it was between one and a half to two percent.
I think that's right.
What I saw. I thought, I saw the one at one point eight.
And, and, and maybe that's like, I don't have the exact.
I don't know either.
And, and I wasn't here last week when the schools presented their budget, but, uh, one of my meetings with the education committee, I think I may have mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again. Most telling statistic to me was when you looked at Virginia teachers across the country, they were like, thirty-eight, hold on, it's a caveat. You take out region eight.
Northern Virginia.
Northern Virginia, which gets the bonus that's paid to them from the state of Virginia, were forty-seven. So when you talk about everywhere except for Fairfax, Arlington and those guys, were forty-seventh across the country.
Should we be compared to California pieces?
I don't want crowds shake that much. I did that once.
Forty-seven among the.
The fifty states, among, among, among the fifty states. If you took out that one little district where the state of Virginia pays additional, I think, the, the cost of competing, because they say they have to compete with.
With Maryland.
They pay them an additional stipend for those rural Virginia teachers. But I'm just saying, just take that one.
Move up there then. Those are better rates and all than the options the rest of us have always had. And we even have to move out of state sometimes, like I said.
Okay. They do that. But I'm not doing it right now, but I'm just telling you that if you take that one district out, and I'm not sure how many districts there are in the state. If there's only one, it gets, inflates the number that much and go from thirty-eight to forty-seven.
And to Mr. Sheridan's point, I think technically, I know it changed a little bit the last year, last couple of years, but I think we're in the top eight, uh, like we're number eight in the country as far as economic, um, overall. So if you look at it and take Mr. Sheridan's point of it, take out that one area, which is just one portion of the state, and we're, we're at the very bottom of the states, yet we're at the very top of the economic levels. It clearly shows that we're not prioritizing, uh, teacher pay in a competitive fashion. And to answer your question about inflation, according to, according to, to the US government, it's point six four percent last year. It's projected to be two point two four percent this year.
Could you say that louder to me?
It was point six four last year and projected to be two point two four this year. I'm sorry, point six two last year.
Just kind of.
So again, the, from, from, from inflation, because there's different components you can look at. Sometimes we look for what B R S is showing and then there's, you know, uh, what the C P I is i- i- in other ways. But again, it's, it's been lower. So, so those are just some updates for the board as we start moving forward. Like I said, next week, we, we plan to have more of a, a, a little bit more of a presentation during budget work session on, on some of the health insurance options and we'll have some stuff regarding pay and, and some of that. But, but tonight was meant to, meant more to be one, do the board members have questions regarding any of the department budgets? And we can open up the big budget sheet and go down. But really, really kind of wanted to discuss C I P specifically. Uh, they kind of go through the C I P. Plus, I know last meeting, uh, board asked about, you know, what C I P items, um, that were in the original budget that were not funded. Um, what were some outstanding C I P projects that we had that had, uh, uh, Kelly Pat committed to those projects? And we've got a list of those as well. And, um,
You're skipping over the insurance that we really didn't talk about. You said there was about an eight percent increase.
It's an eight, we have an eight point four.
So we have to figure out where the other forty-three thousand is coming from.
Yeah, well, yes. Yeah. So, so that's, we, I have ninety-two thousand in my budget. If the board says we want to pay for all the increase, then we need to, then we need to find roughly forty-two thousand. I'm going to come back forward with a proposal that shows, shows if, if the county needs it, or if we maintain the ninety-two thousand and the county does not want to pay for that forty-two thousand, what that would do to, to employ, uh, health insurance premium.
Have you taken bids for it yet, insurance?
No, no, because, no, because remember, we just, we just transferred over.
Oh, I know that, but I wondered if they're up eight percent. Maybe there's another insurance company that's only up two or three percent because that's the way we got the good rates that we have now.
Yeah. But if you're, well, whoa, remember, this is the state pool program, Mr. Weaver, and, and, and generally you don't want to, you don't want to, uh, you don't want to shop premiums every single year. Um, you know, last year we got.
Why not?
Why not? Because, uh, there's, uh, one, from a, from a claims experience standpoint, um, you need to stay with carriers for, for, for some time to have that, that threshold.
To go up to fifteen percent, you're going to stay with them?
Probably not, but like I said, anthem the local choice. If, if, if we go back and show you where our rates were previously with anthem the local choice.
I realize that.
They were, they were pretty consistent. And one year we got up, got up to seven percent.
We were very unhappy towards the end.
And, and we jumped, and we left anthem local choice and went out with Cigna. And with that, we were seeing double-digit increases every year from fifteen to twenty percent. We were getting quotes initially of thirty percent.
Twenty-one. Last year, last year we went from, uh, uh, quote from Cigna, a thirty percent increase versus anthem the.
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent less than one.
Yeah, that's right.
There's a huge differential. It was a big difference, right?
Yes.
But he's correct in terms of saying that you don't want to shop every single year.
No, but if they take advantage of it, what else can you have? I mean, that's the way business is.
That's true. I mean, historically speaking, historically speaking, health insurance is not a.
Yeah. No question.
Eight percent rate on average, so.
But, but, uh, you know, as long as you'll pay it, they'll keep on filling it at you if they don't think there's any recalls.
And, and, and there's not a whole lot of options for big carriers out there. There really isn't.
It's just a small asking question.
Yeah. And, and, and so we feel that we are in a good pool program right now with good rates and, and, and is eight point four percent fantastic? Well, no, we, we'd love to be at zero, but it is certainly better than the fifteen, twenty percents we were paying before.
I know about a month ago, you said that, that the insurance was holding up very well. We, we were not too bad off this time in this cycle.
Uh, and, and honestly, that's, that's what, that's what was being told to us, um, kind of throughout the, the state pool program. You know, we, we've had, uh, conversations with others that were in kind of the same boat. They were, they were being told that it looks like it was going to be lower. And like I said, I don't know what change as they started coming out with the renewals. You know, we're not sure if there's something from, from COVID. How much has COVID affected what, what claims have been? You know, there's a component of, 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 of people not utilizing health insurance as much from just doing some of your normal, regular things. But, but again, with COVID, how much does that change kind of the, the landscape of, of the health insurance world? So, you know, is there, is there the chance that maybe they're hedging their bets on, on what COVID does? I don't know. But, but again, I think we will come back with, uh, with some proposals of if the board wants to cover it, if the board wants to stay at the ninety-two thousand, or if the board says we don't want to cover any, any, any health insurance increase, well, I'll have options for the board to, so they can make a decision. Okay. So, um, so any further questions on that? If not, we can go into, Mr. Goddard, I'm sure, do you have that other product?
Kelsey was waiting until you were done, then she's going to share it.
Given the changes on salary stuff, certainly, uh, you've taught me. Do you want to look at social services, but there's no point in doing that with everything changing as well too. Great compelling case for, for her.
Yeah. And, and, and I think maybe at the next meeting, once we have more of like, uh, insurance and salaries, salary options, you know, that's probably going to be the time to jump into the budget balance sheet and start making some moves and seeing, seeing what, what that means and what, and how that looks. And, and, and maybe by that point, you know, maybe we'll have some, we can see if the commissioner has any changes, um, from any taxable, taxable values at that point.
Karen, I think we're met, but I, we'll be contacting you to see if he's gotten anything.
So you have access to.
Yeah, we were ready to refresh it. We did it. So, we have the stop sharing. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. And maybe was what we want to do. Maybe we want to look at the existing C I P projects that we have outstanding.
Yeah.
Where does she put the share? Because she didn't do share screen. She didn't share that document right there. Will you share? Share screen. So this document right here, so this is the list of outstanding CIP projects that are, that were remaining. Because if you remember, if you go down to the bottom of column E, we had five point three million dollars in outstanding, outstanding county funds, general fund dollars that were toward CIP projects. If you go over to the next column, that list, you know, we're, we're eight months into the fiscal year, that, that list has, has certainly changed, you know, significantly. We still have some projects that are still on the list, that some of them just haven't started. And, and some of them have been quite a few years that they haven't started. But again, out of this list, there are not a whole lot of projects that are outstanding that maybe are not necessary. And, and the only three that I can really think of, well, and, and I don't even necessarily know that this is not a project. You know, there's seventy thousand that's outstanding for the recoding of the central wastewater treatment plant. That's certainly a, a necessary project, although it's been outstanding for quite some time. Also, there is, there is fifty thousand dollars put in the budget some years ago for the library and public safety combined water system. If you remember here, you know, it's technically a, a, a non potable, there's, there's a, a non community, it's not, no, there's a certain terminology for the water system here. And, and that fifty thousand would, would make it more, more of a, a complete sanitary, potable water system. But again, if you're looking at that, there we go. Thank you, Brian SBC. He, he said non transient is, is the terminology. And if you want a, a more specific explanation, I'm sure he can give that. But again, the, the library and public safety combined water system, if the, if the board wants to move forward with maybe more of a, more buildings in this area with an admin building or social services building here, maybe there's a, a more comprehensive approach that we need to take than, than, than that fifty thousand. So again, that fifty thousand's been kind of sitting there. There's a lot of, there's, there's a good chunk left from the CAD project, which a CAD project has been completed. And that project came in significantly under, under budget previously with the bids that came in. As you move down, there's some, some little bits of money here and there. Once you get down to the ninety eight thousand for the Pleasant Grove road paving, if you remember, the, the board approved that as a carryover request in fiscal year seventeen. The ninety eight thousand will not pay Pleasant Grove Road. After speaking with Mr. Hickman, and you know, and they've had some discussions with, with VDOT and some other things, there are a lot, there are a lot of improvements that would need to be done, talking about culverts and, and, and the sides of the road in order to be able to even pave that road. You'd be throwing, you'd be throwing money, money away to pave it before, if you didn't take care of some of the other components.
What about VDOT? Do they do anything in that area?
They do not. We, we have reached out to VDOT about, on multiple times during multiple years about paving that. And, and they, they have not, they have not indicated that there's any funding that's available for that.
Are there any conditions? Would they not pay it? In other words, if we do this or we, we do that?
Again, there may be some grant program out there that we can do something. And, and this kind of goes back. There's, there's still a lot of due diligence that has to be done on, on, on that to get it up to where it needs to be. So.
Do we have a list of what those are?
I don't have it right in front of me, Mr. Weaver, and, and I'm not sure. I, I'd have to get with, VDOT to see if they have, between Public Works and VDOT, to see what, what items were, were required to move that, to move that forward.
Didn't Beth tell us that they have less money than they have in the past?
Yes, and Mr. O'Brien.
I think it was, it doesn't even qualify based on traffic count.
We just need to make sure that California Saturday afternoon, when it's not COVID in soccer.
Yeah, so, so again, we have that, those funds that have been sitting there. The capital reserve, you know, we certainly don't want to touch that. There are some funds under fired rescue. Out of the two seventy three, there is not a hundred and ninety thousand that was set aside for a county ambulance. And that we've kind of, we've kind of, last fiscal year, we've kind of held on to until, you know, we get through COVID and moves through. And there's some other funds there. I'm not sure what the difference.
The one, the one point two million is to set aside for debt funding.
No, but there's two seventy.
There's a little leftover from years back project.
But then, once you get under fleet replacement, you know, there's not much money there. And, and I can tell you right now, fleet replacement for the school buses, some of that two hundred and thirty seven thousand is already in process. And, and they probably ordered the buses. It's just payment hasn't come in yet. If you scroll down a little bit, please. You know, historic courthouse, we have two hundred and fifty thousand there. We just had a conversation about that. When we bring it forward, a full proposal to move forward on that, park monitor replacement, that's, that's something that we have to do. And then, let's see here, and, and really, that's it. You know, a lot of the projects and a lot of the money that we have kind of committed in, in, as of February twenty sixth, there's not many things that haven't started that you could really uncommit at this point. So, you know, like I said, we, we have a few that we could, but it just depends on what the board's, you know, thinking is from, you know, specifically, I think more so the Pleasant Grove road paving. Could that ninety eight thousand? Is it, are we just going to have it sit there? Or is it better to go back to fund balance, we utilize for something else? And that's assuming we want to pay ca- pay cash for things. So now, just kind of a quick overview of where our currents, where our currency ID is and the dollars that we have allocated. And so. Other would be grants. It would be, you know, if, if the board had, had discussed debt funding something previously, if the board approved proffers. Yeah, okay, yeah. Yes, so, so that's, that's all. It's just basically grants or branches debt. So do the board have any questions about any projects on this list that they see that they want to?
What about Pleasant Grove?
The paving, we have ninety eight thousand set aside because that was the, the number that was given to us four years ago. Well, that's no longer a realistic number. So. If we pave it, it's going to cost a lot more than ninety eight thousand dollars.
Oh, I understand that, but why does it have to be paved?
It doesn't. That's, that's a board decision.
That's a board decision.
Mr. Spencer, do you want to address gravel and high holes?
Six loads of gravel on about a half of that stretch. And two weeks, three weeks ago, and we need another six. And we would have to do, we probably need to do that twice a year. As much as that road gets used, and it washes out and it goes down. No, that's not even in my, that's in the fine area to do technically, I believe. So I don't even. A two, three hundred dollars alone, I would say. So, two grand, we'll say two grand maybe for a half.
Six huge gravel.
Then that's nine, that's like a third of the distance we got to go. And we probably need to do that at least twice a year. And that's not even the road to the, to the pole barn that we have to maintain with gravel and the road to my parking lot that we have to maintain with gravel.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
That's just that one stretch.
Yeah, that, that's true. That's, that's stretch going out to the fields and everything. I mean, as Mr. Spitzer said, you got a lot of, you know, probably the, the, the ditches need to be addressed. And it's some of that, the drainage issues need to be addressed more than probably the.
I mean, every time it rains.
You know, I have pitches on, on Saturday.
There are no culvert towns with it, no, sir. There are no culvert towns. Maybe one, if I'm not mistaken, right there. The bottom of the first hill where you come off the pavement, you go to gravel. And I think at the bottom. Before you even get down, and there's streams on one side, and it never gets sun. So it's always stays wet, right there along that one stretch along the soccer field where there's streams. It hardly ever dries out, so it's always wet. It'll just get out of the road. It'll go over to the ditch. And some of them get sunk down in the ground, you know, it's a little bit everything.
So again, we either, we either use the ninety eight for other things, well, well, other things for that project, or you just put it back into fund balance to utilize for something else.
It sounds like at least a significant portion of that.
Or do we put it back and just pay for that as we got?
Guy asked a question.
We should put it back.
Use that money to pave it to my parking lot that I constantly have to fix. If we use four cars, five cars, thirty times a day that I know of, it's a smaller stretch to go to the left into our parking lot.
Are you talking going around?
Uh huh, to the left. A lot of people use the community garden. They go that way. Then it gets used a lot, and it's not as big of a stretch.
I think I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at it.
That's a question. I mean, we have the horses rolling and.
We can go back and take a look at that. I think that if we do something, we just try to do both that section and the other section at one time, rather than trying to do one than the other, something of that nature.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and, and like I said, this, I don't know where this ninety eight thousand came from. I think it was from Mr. Stevens.
He thought he was going to be able to get grants.
Grants, and, and I think he was just talking about chip and tar or something like that, even at, at, at the point, something a little lower. But, but again.
I would say maybe like what they did to bring West Bottom Road when it got tore up so bad by dump trucks. That's when they came in there, they just, I'm guessing that's the.
But again, the road's not going to last unless you do the proper.
But we really don't have a price of what it would cost to do this Pleasant Grove road and his parking lot. Until we know that, then we can say whether we can afford it, what we can find the time to sell them, I don't know. But we are making this going back in.
Yeah, I, I think certainly if we wanted to pave a lot of those roads, you're probably looking at close to, I would say probably close to half million dollars.
I don't know. It's a mile from the pole barn back to the maintenance. So whatever that, from where we did the. The farm museum back to where we took the dirt.
VDOT standard, what do they normally, what do they normally quote for it? And this is, this is a very, very high standard. You know, what do they normally quote for a mile?
Maybe three miles of road.
I think you were close with the half million, the amount that we're doing. And that, that's, and that's a with solid base, base growth and culverts and everything.
Well, it seems to me that we should have some, you know, have some options presented as to how that.
And, and we can do that. Like I said, we just wanted to show the board. Like I said, I don't think there's a whole lot on this list. We need to do a lot with, because I think it's, it's all pretty much moving forward. They're just, really, the Pleasant Grove road almost really the only one that's probably more of a nicety that, and less of a, a need to than some of the other things like the, like the public water and the, and, and the recover of the wastewater tank. Those things need to be done. So Liz, let's, let's get off this sheet and let's go into this, the, the original CIP requests. So this, and maybe, maybe high column, B, C. So the first column. So the first column, if you see on the screen there, under FY twenty two proposed, that's, that's the total amount that was requested. Seven point six million dollars for CIP. Your number in my budget proposal, I funded, it was about, you have the sheet, Mary. So. Department's requested seven point six million dollars in CIP projects for this year. And in my budget, I propose three point five million dollars. This was before the, the discussion that took place of, should we start, should we fund some of the projects with debt? And, and I think, Mr. O'Brien, I think you had, had asked, what? And 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 I think Mr. O'Brien, I think you had had asked, what projects did we not? What projects did we not fund um that were that that will be requested?
What I suggested was that we look at number ones and number twos. It's only put as, you know, high priorities and the.
I think occasionally we pick up some of those, go along now, but not enough to keep up.
So if you're going there, so again, if you're looking in the first section under county services, this is basically carceral rat projects. In the current fiscal year, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Spencer requested a hundred and one, hundred and ninety one thousand um in this budget. And again, I didn't fund that in my budgets. Uh, but again, you know, when we looked at debt service even, uh, the last time we we discussed this, we had discussed that service for projects that were, one, we felt it important that we use debt service funds to take care of the things that we already have, you know, equipment, buildings, things of that nature. Um, so so that wasn't, uh, that wasn't included in there. Now, we certainly, if if that's the direction wants to go, we could include that in there. But again, I think it's important that we make sure that, you know, taking care of the the things that we have.
I think one thing maybe to notice, sometimes something is made of one because of cost. So for example, I was looking at Pleasant Grove and say we were gonna do some debt funding. Everybody sort of feels like, feel like something that will ultimately make that part or reduce the part and allow us to host tournaments and so on.
What was that? Make it more foot lighting of the lighting?
The lighting is technically maybe a higher priority and it's really the next year, but we selected the playgrounds, pools, you know.
Hmm, okay.
Spray park, but really maybe we should be looking at, you know, if we're debt funding some stuff, should we do it lighting first? It's kind of.
Yeah, yeah, I think you have what six hundred, because you got two years worth of uh funds out there. So it's about six hundred and eighty thousand to do four fields worth of lights. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
My fields, three soccer fields, a baseball and softball.
Yep, yep.
But if we do that, we might have to look into lighting, getting back to the areas to along the roads or if it's just the dark road, you know what I'm saying? We might. You might have to think about that as we move along like a street skate lighting kinda in the park. Because you are driving back there at night and stuff like that, or we don't, you know, I don't know. Do you want, yeah. And we make sure we light up the parking areas with that light and that kind of stuff, so. But you're right, lights would generate more money and able to use our fields than the spray pad. It will. I mean, we already have two lighting fields in the county. One's a baseball and one's a softball field. So we don't have a lot, the county doesn't, uh, a multi-use facility that we have lights up there. So soccer's done at seven, eight o'clock. They don't have a choice.
Whatever it is.
So we did, so we.
Baseball.
Baseball, you play it on nine, ten o'clock. We usually try to make it.
At that deal.
Yep, but if you're playing. Grove, you're done at seven, eight o'clock.
Do you play on weekends?
You do, but you still don't at seven, eight o'clock where you can, where we could have maybe a men's league that runs from eight to eleven. You know, eight, nine, ten, you're done at eleven. Where the kids won't be out there where, but right now we can't have a men's league because the kids take it all. If that makes sense.
It's really a cascading problem as well.
So really what you're recommending is moving the one guy to one down road. For the next year, the spray park and and there's.
Kind of currently with COVID and cleaning and all that, the spray park would maybe be a pain to try to get clean every day with COVID. But you know, it's, you know, to open during COVID, going and cleaning after uses and that stuff. Where our lights, we turn them on and people can use the fields.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Three sixty five, one year, three fifteen the next year.
I think one was soccer, the other was baseball and softball. I think the soccer was gonna be a little bit more than the baseball and softball because we're trying to like the three fields, we're going poles in the middle. I I can't, I'd have to go look at my stuff.
So you're suggesting get rid of the spray.
No, I don't get rid of it. No, I'm not saying get rid of it.
Just move it down.
Just treat the years, treat the years, man.
Sorry, yes, moved over, but when you said cleaning, so.
Well, because we're in COVID, maybe COVID two years, it's gone. So it's something that's easier to maintain.
Does does uh the lack of lighting affect the amount of, I'm sure it does, but how much of an impact does it have on, you know, uh, on people signing up for activities, softball teams in the area and stuff like that?
Well, we don't do signups, so it's hard for me to say that. I can do, because of rentals, like we have more teams wanting to use our fields for rentals outside of Cleveland youth baseball or softball or soccer. So our times are limited to where we can allow a a a travel team to come in and use the field space in the county because we're already giving it to the kids during the daylight hours. Um, we got the lacrosse people that wanna maybe come out and use the fields on the weekends. Soccer fields, well, it's maybe Sunday is the only day because Saturday they're running most of the day. Um, stuff like that. Um, we can't really run if we wanted to uh say an ultimate frisbee league because we don't have lights. But we can run that in the evenings after the kids are done, but we can't do stuff like that. So we're, it's just limited because of the daylights and the amount of fields we have. But that's a problem. We run on that every year with lights and fields.
Oh, we have other parks that what that have lights like Carrys Brook isn't, isn't it lighted?
That's the only place that we have and it's one baseball, one softball field.
And what about the uh other baseball uh or softball field that's further down on fifteen?
That is uh owned by the Ruins, I believe. That's not counting.
No lights.
No lights, but that's not counting of either though.
Little league.
I forgot.
Do do you use Carrys Brook?
Every day, all day.
I mean. At night.
Uh, at least five to nine.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
But those teams that practice at Pleasant Grove will try to play at Pleasant Grove, they're done.
They're done at dark or half hour, whatever, before dark.
So this is maybe part of what we're trying to do right now is to say, okay, the board's talked about these things, we're gonna call them at that.
Yeah, the 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 thinking is you had, the board had talked about some debt and 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 we've, we've kind of gone through it and at the last meeting, when we, when we talked about that, we brought forward proposal, we had proposal on some items. Um, you know, specifically more fleet type of replacement stuff. And um the the county building, social services building, renovating those buildings. Those were in in fire rescue app, whereas those are the bulk of what the debt included last time. Now, if if the board wants to put in and 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 so to kind of answer your question, yes, if you want to add some other things to that, then we can come back with a number.
Sort of chair maybe just solicits some head nods and.
Yeah.
To look, well. And and this is just me. I'm not sure what they talked about last week. Once again, apologize being late, but I was just, I had somewhere, anything. Um. The track at the middle school. I would love for us to be able to film in there and redo that track, research that track or re, it really needs to be redone. I wish I'd taken pictures for that. No longer drains. We have a twenty foot moat going around, twenty foot wide moat going around the inside of the, between the football field and the track. Uh, but it's starting to bubble. If we were to redo that facility, I would also put in there and like to the schools, this is gonna be community track if we can do that.
Yeah, the only, and like I said, and that's fine, the school didn't even.
I know that they did. I I walk it every day.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, 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 it's going away from us quickly if we don't.
I I'd also like to remind everybody that this has been an incredibly wet season.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
It's like that every time.
They're no longer, they're no longer, we no longer have a drain. It has the inability to drain. So as long as we get a rainstorm, we're gonna have a moat. Uh, the drain has filled in. They've brought people in trying to see if they could drill to get it unclogged. You can't get it unclogged anymore.
Well, I can tell you how wet it really is because I've lived here thirty five years and the pond in my front field has only overflowed twice and it's overflowing right now.
Unless I promise you it's been wet. I've been here fifty six.
If you look at the track, you should look at the lights that they haven't asked. Because if we're gonna have to open a track up at night, you're gonna have to have light.
They they have asked, they asked for the uh, you know, middle school athletics field, but but they asked for the tracks.
Yeah, oh, I, I, this is just something, I'm saying as a county board that our citizens need somewhere besides just walking through the Pleasant Grove and things like that. It would be, I I think would be useful right now. I'm probably gonna get yelled at when I get to work tomorrow.
So.
So be it. Sorry, Dr. Daniel.
So to go back to 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 go back under the partial recs, are there, are there things that the board thinks we should include just to come up with a number? I mean, you know.
Well, you you keep looking at all these things and they're fine and and maybe we need to do it. But to me, you need to start a priority list. What's what's the important thing you really need here? And then come down from that, but because you're you're comparing all this against everything else. And maybe there's something up here that will stop you from being able to find this at the bottom.
Do you want to go through all the things you went through on the list the other day? We talked about doing the debt service, like zelving?
Well, yeah, if you know, we're going to.
What I would suggest is that we just kind of go through this first pass. You know, get, if you get three head nods on something, put it on, put it over on the list to then be looked at again for second pass. So that we at least have a starting point from what we're then.
Well, that's sort of what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. I think we're saying.
What's the most important thing you need? And and and.
We think we need at Pleasant Grove.
And 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 don't, and well, if if it's fifteen, if it's sixty million dollars, maybe don't put that, but I mean, like.
I mean, like, like, like should be a better solution right now than a spray pad, I believe. Personally. Uh.
Okay.
Or like the field, like we're looking at build the two fields.
Two additional fields.
Yeah, that would be like something like that because like I said, like COVID, it'd be hard for me to open a spray pad right right now. We're cleaning it. Uh, disinfect, you know, disinfectant and all that.
But but that 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 helps us. So if we could get those fields and lights, it would be.
Lights better before the two fields.
Lights before the two fields would be my suggestion.
All right.
At least lights at the soccer field.
And then the shelter you talked about.
Wait, 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 wait.
We only have lights at the base.
Look, let's wait because you're coming to lights and and where we have lights is in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, right?
Yes.
Okay, is is that what we wanna do? Do we want us, do we want to take two years? Not this year, two years to do that?
No, yeah.
If we had the people there to do it, they're costing us less money to have them just.
Well, well, again, if the board want, if the board feels, like I said, Mr. Spencer, I think it's, I I I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think you put the spray ground pad because it was important at the time. But maybe that became a higher priority because it was a cheaper.
It 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 fit our budget a little bit better while we put it there. I remember that.
That's not.
Right, to to your point, just trying to get a list of number one and number two. Number one being lights, number two being the fields.
I would write out, yeah.
It wasn't there, I'm there, my sort of to improve the Pleasant Grove uh sort of uh shelter slash uh staging area. Is that the sixty one thousand dollars that we have there?
Now, that was for another uh like pole barn type like pavilion out there because we lost one. When the snow came, we used to have two in the back. We lost one and the snow took the roof down.
It was a long time ago.
A long, it was probably six, seven years ago. And so we had to take one down and never got re-put up. So I think that was for another pole barn on the same side as the current one with the bathroom on the back of it. And that way the the bathroom would serve as both pole barns.
And and the sort of talk about either tending or putting a roof on the stage together or moving the stage, is that?
Uh, we're, you know, put a new twenty about twenty stage part of the house. So we're gonna have a stage in the back. And we're gonna try to do that before May.
And that's, that's.
We're gonna have the money for that. That was carryover money.
The board already.
All right, so.
Maybe we'll have a thought, but.
Thank you. Go on one and two and then we can worry about the others from there.
Yep, all right. And I can re-uh reboot them around.
Next, next, anybody else categorize C I Ps?
Say that again?
I'm just asking what's next for C I P. We got his number one.
Look at the abs, things that you absolutely have to do first. Then fill in what other things that are not absolutely necessary.
We're just getting the list right now, Miss Seager. Nobody, nobody put anything anywhere.
We're just lying on our map. All right, so if if you go under some of the next items under uh public works. Um, again, we've already talked about the historic courthouse renovation. I don't necessarily know we need to do anything with that per se right now. We think we have a plan already with.
Mr. Moss's.
Yeah, we're doing the historic structure report and then getting some grant funds to 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 achieve, you know, hopefully the desired funding for that. And I don't necessarily know that we want to put funds towards that right at this moment while we're in that process.
I wouldn't be, we've got to get the report back that we approved last, last meeting.
Right, um, you know, the next item um is the equipment purchase and replacement plan. That was to um that was to cover a lot of the uh tractors, skid steers, things like that. If you remember, uh, Mr. Hickman was talking about, there's a lot of things that had um outstanding issues with them, you know, they're aging, they're putting lots of, lots of money into repairing them.
But it doesn't have a one, it's.
It it does have a one, it does have a one.
The one that's um.
Yeah, if you look at this.
Equipment purchase and replacement.
Yeah, yep. And so that was, you know, what what Mr. Hickman requested was three hundred, like, is that?
Three fifty five.
Three fifty fives. So I mean, in my opinion, those are things that we utilize on a on a pretty frequent basis and and we also. Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, those are items that that, you know, we utilize to, you know, maintain county operations for for water, from from public works. Those are important things. Um, the paving, uh, paving for really for a a lot of lots. I mean, and this is something that you could do countywide. There are a lot, there are a lot of parking lots within the county, whether and Mr. Uh, and and Major Wells is shaking his head from the sheriff's office and just county lots in general. Uh, unfortunately, they've gotten to the point where you know, they should have been paved at some point, they should have been sealed and and you have to extend the life of them. That just hasn't occurred. We're at the point now where we got a lot of county lots, whether it's schools or county buildings that are gonna need to be addressed. Um. And so what do you do to repair that?
You have to re, we we pay them.
Take up the asphalt, put a new down.
Yeah.
They can't put a tire covering over them and sealing a lot of.
I did not ask for traveling that way. Steal it down. All it does is just break right into your asphalt.
Same place.
Just cracks it up.
It's what I was wondering.
You gotta put asphalt. You can't put any time so far over asphalt. You have to asphalt on asphalt.
So so another road in one.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so and so we have lots of parking lots, schoolwide, countywide, and so.
You know, that layer has to be as thick as the original was. You're gonna repaint it.
Generally, yeah, no. Seventy five thousand, this, this one was just looking. Yeah, over, over, uh, three different fiscal years.
Wow.
Four hundred.
Let's see, like, maybe I have a question. Just to see what somebody tries to do all of them.
All of it. Yeah.
Because that's a number that we can plug in. Or more custom.
And that, yeah, and that way the wear and tear may be.
Just to see what somebody tries to do all of them.
All of it. Yeah.
Or more custom.
And that, yeah, and that way the wear and tear may be.
Uh, are you showing them like, oh?
Paint and everything, everything. And you, when you come in, you seal everything.
Yep.
And it's not, it's not their law control.
So, so kind of continue to go down public works. We talked about the HVAC at community center and social services upgrades. You know, some of this, it was, um, the original amount was, here, here, hundred and ten thousand. Now, some of this may or may not be needed depending upon if you do other things with the social services building. So maybe, maybe there's a portion of that that's needed. But we know there's, there's some funds that are going to be required to, to at least repair those at some point. Yeah, and, and, and really the fourteen-six and then just nominally, we put in, just in the, in the last debt service, we put sixteen million. Because the fourteen-six we were given, you know, a year and a half ago, so we just put some contingency in there and we have to go look back. So remember the, what, let's just call it sixteen million dollars. That's to build a new admin building, to build a new social services building, to renovate the existing admin building with the courthouse and then to renovate the Carriage or the old social services building. Correct, yeah.
And do we have.
This is number three.
And do we have a purpose in mind what some old social services do?
Yeah, it's just.
I know the OX Act would be that.
Yeah, and, and like I said, you know, we had, we had talked about the, the, the social services building. And one, with, with the maintenance shop and all that being right down there. It would make sense to have a component of some office space for, for public works, public utilities. Um, maybe having a more consolidated, um, department of everything right there instead of having, you know, public utilities here, public works spread out, out, all over. So consolidate public works, public utilities to that location. And then you could utilize also a por, a portion of it for, um, Parks and Rec. Since there are so many, um, parks and rec type amenities instead of it, instead of having them at the community center. Utilize the Carriage Brook complex more because you've got the gym, you have the fields, you've got the performing arts stage. It would just be a, a better place to kind of, you know, oversee, you know, all parks and rec activities there. So that's, that's what we would envision as, as, as what, what we could see happen with social services.
The fourteen-six was admin building. Social services building and then fixing the other two million, yes. I'm writing down the, the fifteen then.
Yeah, fifteen, six, sixty million, like I said, we need to go back and just reconfirm those. But that's fourteen-six was the number that we got from the, from the art, uh, architect that did the space utilization study, uh, a couple of years ago. So I'm, I'm sure it's more than fourteen-six at this point.
Yeah.
That, that's why I was just calling down sixteen million and maybe I'm, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's a little bit more than that, but that's.
All right.
Again, vehicles are, they plug in and get out as well too.
Services, they, they've got a few vehicles, you know, countywide vehicles, you know, more so, you know, for some of the work trucks. Um, from, from public works, public utilities, some of the work trucks for building inspections. Um, and just some of the county, county fleet vehicles in general are, are, are a little aged, um, and you know, we have, you know, some years past, we have purchased some new ones. But we, we do have some pretty, pretty old vehicles that are still being utilized. So, so some, a fleet, uh, upgrade for, for county would be, would be, uh, is needed. And also we had talked about down at Carriage Brook Complex, an equipment storage shed for the equipment, for the major equipment. Everything kind of sits out in the elements right now and, and if you, you know, ideally consolidating everything down there for public works, public utilities and having an equipments. Right now, you've got a maintenance shop back there. If you build in an equipment storage shed back there, it just kind of makes everything a little more consolidated. Equipment can be some consolidated up and down in that area.
How big's the old bay? I've never been in the track before.
In, in the maintenance shop? How many bays are there? I know we got a lot of equipment.
It's one bay, it's one door.
It's one long door.
And they got one left that they can put a truck up on in the middle.
Yep.
And they got a bunch of bowlers lined up in there. And then upstairs, they have another room that's upstairs to have their meat eaters and blowers and all that stuff. And then in the back, they have a shop room with, um.
But there, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of room for, for major equipment.
No, they got, they got a pack there.
So, but I think, I think we really addressed some of the public works and like I said, I think a, a, a majority of these things that we gave the board of some of the, the debt. Um, with the exception of the paving and the HVAC, a lot of those figures were kind of included into that debt, that figure.
Didn't we include also labor? Something to do with.
Yeah, we did, yeah. And like I said, once we get down to the schools piece, yeah, we, we did include that as well. Under public safety, um, secure salary port and then sheriff's vehicles, we included sheriff's vehicles, um, in there. You know, we could easily just roll in the seventy-five thousand dollars for a secure salary. But the one thing to, to kind of remember is depending on how we do this, you know, you maybe don't want to take out debt long-term for, for some items of, of smaller, um, of a smaller dollar note. You know, like a lot of the vehicles, you know, you could structure it away. Maybe you take that out for a five to seven-year term for vehicles, as we said. Ten years for, for major equipment apparatus, tractors and then, you know, twenty to thirty years for renovations or thirty years for brand-new, uh, brand-new builds.
What was this, I mean, just saying maybe we're quickly pressure, you know, I don't think Mr. Shannon was here on the, the proposed amount of debt that we might look at.
Yep.
I can't remember if that was sixteen million or twenty, twenty-two million or something like that.
Around twenty, so we're, we're.
Well, if you look at just twenty-two and twenty-three and you look at the total amounts that are allocated there, then roughly eight million, not trying to get them. Full sixteen million, really that's twenty-four million. You know, and I'm not, and then I'm saying you can still go back and eliminate stuff, but rather than one line by line, maybe we can change. Here's what we're not gonna do. Keep that, because if you do twenty-four million, pretty much get caught up.
I know, but at the time.
Just go to, just go to the tab.
No, that's what I'm saying.
The tab.
It was about twenty-one something and then it was a million dollars a year. I believe.
Like one point three.
So, so the, there is. Okay, so this is what we did, so. So we came up with.
It was point two, point seven.
Twenty-two point seven five million is what we came up with. We had sixteen million county admin building, Abrams and Carriage Brook, we had roughly two point seven five. Buses, we had one point one million. Um, fire rescue number for one point seven five billion, that was really kind of just, uh, a shot in the dark, a shot in the dark, things were perfect. Like I said, I mean, fire rescuing, there's, you know, they, they certainly have equipment that they, you said that needs to be replaced. What is that number? Kind of goes back to some of the fleets, uh. The public works, uh, for equipment and that came up to a little over half million dollars. And then sheriff's vehicles for one year to catch them up, we did seven vehicles at three hundred thousand. And then county vehicles, we did five, six vehicles at three hundred thousand. Um, and like I said, that came up with two point seven five million. And then the two point seven five million, if you look out there, we, we plugged in, uh, different interest rates and those interest rates are about one percent higher than what current rates are as, as, as we speak today. And then based upon those different amounts and those different terms, we came up with about one point five billion dollars of debt service for all.
Per year.
Per year.
For how long?
It's gonna, it's gonna turn.
Seven, ten, twenty.
Thirty, forty, yes, right, yeah.
Right, and you would use fund balance for the first few years.
First, first three years.
Because then we get a big reduction in our, in our.
One point two seven.
So that would allow us to keep the tax hold.
And it wants to take.
Right. So, so we're not really using new taxes to pay for the debt, if you look at that way. Now, you added in the athletic, I mean, you added in the, the.
Athletic lights.
The athletic lights at six hundred thousand and then say, you know, paving, uh, the services. And then dollars, you're only talking about twenty-four million dollars, it's not gonna change that number very significantly. And I did, that's why I'm saying maybe we should be looking at like what we don't want to look at. Because I think that's pretty comprehensive, let's say.
No, and, and it is, and it, and that covered a lot of things in the sketch.
And the one point five is looking at interest rates pretty much a little one percent more. Yeah, what would that knock it down to?
I think we decided it was closer to one point three as far as debt service. Those are the rules, or those are the rates the financial advisor recommended we use just because of uncertainty.
Well, here, here, scroll up a little bit, Liz. Yeah, okay, so here, if you look at debt service for something right now, if you look at a million dollar, well, let's use the big, let's use the big, big dollar amount. So using the sixteen million dollar, uh, building, that two and a half percent is seven hundred and sixty-four thousand fifty. You know, we're using a one percent higher, so it's another hundred thousand dollars for, um, sixteen billion dollars a year extra debt service. And that's, that we kind of got baked in the worst-case scenario for that.
Right.
So, who do you want the worst scenario?
Like, you didn't. One of the school things that you include other than Abrams. You got an HVAC or three.
Buses. Yeah, so a lot of buses.
Buses, what else?
We, we, we did a complete renovation of Abrams for one point two million dollars. We did the, the, the whole HVAC renovation at Carriage Brook because that's really the last building of school buildings that need HVAC. And then one point one million for buses, which is about ten buses.
Right. Do you have any payment, uh, if you're not?
No, there's no payment, so again, as Mr. Orion said, if, if we wanted to add in county schools paving in some light, you know, maybe the twenty-two million's up to twenty-four million. And if you're taking out debt for that, I mean, yes, there is, there's an increase in that, but.
So you're at twenty-two right now.
Twenty-two point seven.
Yeah, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is if, if we take what he's got there, does the board think that what he has there, something should be removed? And then I would say what should we add that isn't on there?
The only thing that's, the only thing that catches me on there is the ten buses. When you buy ten of them at one time, that means going by the twenty-year thing, you're gonna try to replace ten of them at one time. That's, that's the one thing I've been after them about is give us the total number you need. Eighty, okay, and it's every, I think they're every twenty years.
Do you have any other schools on the county?
I think I saw Mr. Striplin on there. Striplin, are you on there?
I am, good evening, everyone.
Good question. How many years do you have buses after, and then how many do we need total?
Can you repeat that? You broke up a little bit.
But how much, how many buses do we need total? I mean, how many do we have on the road total?
Approximately, approximately seventy-two on a daily basis.
Right at eighty, let's say eighty-two, okay? Is it every twenty years? Well, what I'm saying, you gotta have some spares.
What, uh, what they say is a fifteen-year cycle, uh, to be within the, uh, Virginia Department of Transportation. But we've been looking at more of a, a twenty years, well, we've done both, a fifteen-year analyst and a twenty-year. Um, so the numbers would be different.
Right, so it's either five, four or five a year keeps us on that cycle.
Yeah, because you don't want to, we don't want to buy ten and then all ten of them.
Well, that's what I'm, that's, that's, that's the point I was making. If we buy, if we buy a pocket full of new ones at one time, then we're gonna want to replace them all at the same time.
Right.
Twenty years from now.
I, I think what they're trying to say is they're way behind on the twenty-year. And so this is kind of a sugar rush to get, get caught up and then.
And, and you know, maybe then you get back on the fact.
Do you hear what Mr. Doll's saying? Is that, is that correct, Mr. Striplin?
It, it is, once we get to a neutral level, then we'll just have to replace, if we want to stay on that fifteen-year cycle. Then we'll just have to replace the buses that come up within every year. That's why it's a continual process. And if we stay with the buses, so replace two that, on twenty-twenty-two, if we replace the buses that go to the sixteenth year, that's a continual process, we're just behind right now, that's all.
How, how, how many miles do you get on a bus?
That depends on the bus itself, but we like to get two hundred thousand miles as a minimum. Right now, for example, we've got five buses that, um, that have engine and transmission problems. And actually will be coming to you, uh, to replace some motors for those. So, and those are all, some of them have a hundred and fifty, some of them have a hundred and seventy-five. And then the ones that we're not gonna, uh, put money into, uh, one of them has two hundred and seventy and the other one's over two hundred thousand. So we had to prioritize. And that's just the reality of automobiles. And, and I'm not being, I, I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying sometimes some last for two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand. We got a, we have a sped bus, uh, that's been on the road for twelve years, uh, with three hundred thousand miles. But we're not gonna put any money into it, so we're gonna have to replace that because of the transmission and engine issues.
We want some more like that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, are you? Do you have, I mean, the spores are gonna be returned some, so some of that could be used to buy buses, not on the debt fund, you know. Buy five, but that, five, debt fund.
That's kind of the point I'm making, if we took five buses off of this and turned that into the lights at Pleasant Grove, you can move them.
The lights.
And that's, yeah.
I, I'm just going out something.
Yeah. I hear, yeah.
That's reason we have a priority.
Yeah, we need to.
Yes, sir. All. All right.
And, and you know, the one thing with this, like I said, whatever, whatever the board comes up with for this number, you know, whether it's one point three million, it's one point six million, I mean, I know three hundred thousand differences, that's, that's a big difference. You know, the one thing is that, Liz, go back to the other tab that shows the, the debt service falling off. Yeah, so remember right here, twenty-two, we have two forty-six drop, not one seventy-three, one point two. You know, you, you have, that one point five million is falling off in that service within the next three years. So again, if you fund the payments with the fund balance, that's what was being with fund balance. Theoretically, with, with how we have the debt baked in, that, that payment would just offset that.
That was the three million that we were gonna use to plan to play. See, I've got, you're already bringing up four, a hundred thousand in M R R.
I think this is the best thing that we can do. This is a good thing for us.
What, what do you think, Miss Seager?
Well, we, we already have about.
Well, we, we already have about a hundred million dollars worth of debt, correct?
About eighty, I think, now, isn't it? Little over eighty.
Little over eighty.
Still a lot of debt, Trace, move back to the.
So what is our debt right now?
Little over eighty.
Eighty.
And we, and how much do we pay off each year, seven million, eight million?
We paid off about six and a half million dollars in principal and later.
It was over a hundred. Was it, was it a hundred or ten?
It was.
Hundred and ten.
Who cares?
So three, three years ago.
Good time for discussion about this, okay?
So three years from now, we didn't take on any initial debt.
You'd have to.
We had sixty eight million dollars, right?
I think, I know, we got too many people talking.
No, that's all right, I'm just positive.
I know you're positive.
Listen on that bus, Pat.
I know, I'm glad I'm not sitting any closer.
Yeah, I don't want you to hit me.
Here, here you go, sir.
Order, order.
So, so just real quickly, I mean, just, we're at eighty million right now, we're paying off six and a half, seven million each year. That means in three years we'd get sixty two million if we didn't do anything, right? But we're still don't have current funding to pay for what's on the CIP that needs to be done, so we keep on pushing it out. So if we take out eighty million today, three years from now, I mean, I'm sorry, if we take out the twenty four, twenty five million right now, three years from now, we'll basically be exactly where we are today.
Well, and yet another number to add in is if we build the admin.
And it'll cost us more money right now.
If, if we build the admin building, we did about the forty five or fifty thousand dollars a year we're paying right now to move the reds to, to view off.
That's a great point.
So that's another forty five, fifty thousand plus whatever we're paying for county, uh, admin building, wherever we're paying in repairs.
Well, I mean, just repairs, I mean, all the buildings, I mean, all the buildings need repairs, they're, they're, they're old buildings, I mean, and, and so.
We don't wanna let them go to disrepair, but.
Yeah, look at that corn hats.
But you have to repair them, uh, the, the admin building if you're gonna give it to the courts.
Well, then again, well, no, you would.
That's part of this project, I think, Ms. Seager, that's right into the sixteen.
Yeah, the, the admin building, it, it's, it, it's, we're just out of space in it, I mean, the admin building had a pretty good renovation that.
We put a lot of money into it last eight years.
So it would be more of a renovation to kind of spruce it up and, and tie it together with.
Well, and the biggest part of the renovation would be making the downstairs into something usable if we did that for the court system. But that would might be something where we have to sit down with the court system and say, what would y'all need us, what would need to be done in this building to make it useful to y'all? They may say, we don't need that, we'll use it for records or something of that nature.
I'm going on with it, but it's not included in the lights.
Well, I mean, I think five buses versus the lights are gonna get, if we don't do the lights now, we won't be doing the lights for another five, six, seven.
Let's do the lights, it's not costing that much.
Pleasant Grove is.
Another add-on, Jose.
But Pleasant Grove is one of our primary assets.
We do, because.
It's one of our primary assets here that, that people can look at and say, here's what you're doing, and, and that's a nice investment in Pleasant Grove.
Well, it's a nice investment, and i- if you do the lights, you're invested in. Because that's who's gonna.
You know, comments I hear about Pleasant Grove from people in other places come here, it's astounding. They, they think we have one of the best places they've ever seen.
Absolutely.
And I think we do too, and I supported the purchase.
It was on your ideas.
So, so, but let's be reasonable, there are, there are certain things that have priorities over lights. And we're in a bind right now, we need these things to, and want to do the lights, do them later, don't, don't build that principal off anymore.
With the lights, don't, we are never getting.
I don't want to build the principal off anymore, just don't want to pull one thing off and replace it.
What are you talking about?
If, if we go from ten school buses to five.
I'm not talking about school buses, I'm talking about the lights.
Correct, sir, but I'm saying if we go from ten school buses to five and then put the light in, it's, it washes its hands, so that just, it's, it's less than.
Just past something that isn't, is half power.
I, 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 I think that's the wrong, the wrong way to look at it, what we're doing is we're, we're creating more value and more utilization of one of our primary assets, uh, lights. And it's something that, I mean, I think lights have been on there since I've been on the board, just now seven years, so every year we keep on pushing it out. So lights will get pushed out for another seven years.
Not necessarily, we're not, because it's even now, our budget's going to be even in a sense.
I mean, so we're talking about, so that we're all on the same page, we're talking about sixteen million, uh, uh, I'm sorry, we're talking about sixteen million for the building, another roughly what, six million, seven million, what you got there? It's twenty two, so, so you got six million dollars for something other than the building. That, if you look at, if you look at the CIP, if you just look at the two current years, you don't even keep the building aside, that's eight million right there. And then if you go to the next year, the next two years, that's another eleven million of CIP projects. I'm not saying they're all, they all need to be funded, but I'm just setting the example that you're really talking about, you know, almost nineteen, twenty million dollars of CIP projects that, you know, some hit on, some don't hit on.
What do we have for the fire department and the rescue?
So in, in there right now, I just put a million seven fifty now, now, again, after.
Mr. Y is prepared to speak to that when we get there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, you want to come up right now? With, with Sam.
I'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if just to catch up on everything that was requested, uh, we're at about two point two million. Um, the one point seven five will, will not fund everything that was requested. Highest priority on the list is engine twenty, as we've talked about, you guys have already approved it, it's in the budget, I believe, it's six hundred K right now, that will not pay for the engine. Chief Alley just, uh, uh, got an updated, uh, quote because it, it's been pushed off, the price has gone up as we, as we predicted, it's now, the, the current quote is six hundred ninety seven K.
But that does not equate it.
Correct. So we have the request, we put the request in for seven hundred and ten K, it's currently in the budget at six hundred K, so I'll leave that there. Second priority is tanker ten, which you did already approve, but, but was pulled out of the CIP last year, um, that's forty four. And ambulance forty nine, as Mr. Doll mentioned, again, was approved, the money has been set aside, but the project was, was held. Again, that will not pay for an ambulance, they are expecting a demo ambulance at that time, they will have to get a grant to, to pay for the rest of it. Um, the next two on our priority list are ambulance fifty five five four, which if you recall is the one that was totaled, so it has to be replaced. Insurance money will cover some, but not all of it, so it's now in there at a hundred K. I am currently working on our, an RSAF grant to get that money, but that's not a guarantee, so we have that in as a request at this point because that ambulance needs to be replaced, it doesn't exist anymore, we're down in it. The next one on the list is ambulance five five three, which is, um, it's due for replacement, in fact, it's, it's overdue at this point. Um, the quote we got on that was three hundred and seventeen K, we had estimated it at two ninety nine. Then the CIP requests and suggested using a three percent per year increase. I've gone over the numbers for the last several years, fire and rescue apparatus has been increasing a, a bit over four percent per year, so they're going above that three percent. Um, for whatever reason, they're extremely expensive. Um, the next ones on the list, um, include car one, the back twenty, response five, and car thirty. But, you know, those are, those are the highest ones, and that comes in about that one point seven million, um, down to ambulance five five three. Um, as I said, to, to catch up on everything that's been in the requests and kicked back for years was, um, about two point two million total.
Two point two million, and you had one point seven.
Well, just, just right here, I just not with the one point seven five, and, and there was, there was no, there was no big science behind that. We, we knew it was more than a million, but we knew, you know.
Here's my, here's my question, in fact, the rest, the rescue squad that we've kind of been holding off on. If we've got to put two full-time crews in to our budget?
We're gonna need another.
And, and I understand it, but what I want to say is, we've been said, because we only have one, okay, three, we always got a replacement. We're having two full-time ones, I will say we probably need four to get that rescue squad, just so we have two. If they have to come back and put one out of service for COVID or whatever. And just prevent a relation. A, a second that they can switch into while somebody cleans the other.
Absolutely, and, and, but they get out of service for, for better maintenance.
Yeah, for maintenance or whatever.
These days now, um, the Office of Emergency Management, part of their biannual inspection is making sure that the preventive maintenance are done per factory specifications, so that, that actually increases the, the preventive maintenance. And so the, uh, vehicles are out of service for, for a lot more than they used to be. The other thing that I would like you to look at, and, and since you're talking about debt funding, this is just a suggestion, just a thought. If you look at the five-year plan that, that's in the CIP, you'll see a couple of years from now is the, uh, the tower ladder is gonna be new, that's gonna be a big project. If money's cheap right now, you might want to think about moving that forward, just a suggestion, just a thought, and it is coming up. I want you to be aware that is gonna be a very expensive piece of apparatus that is due for replacement in a couple of years, so.
Which would be how much?
Two million, yeah, it's gonna be, a couple of years from now, it's gonna be two million, if you buy it now, it'll be a little less than that. And right now, probably one point six million now, if you wait two years, it's gonna be about.
Is that a mandated thing that when we get there?
It's not, it's, it's, it'll be an end of life.
End of life, okay.
Right now, it's in the shop because it's got transmission issues, um, it's a, it's an older piece of apparatus, we bought it, we cost, we bought it, yeah. And it is, uh.
I, I did, Chief D'Antino found that.
Yeah, yes, sir, and it's, um.
Fifty thousand, thirty ten.
Yeah, it's, it's starting to get expensive to maintain because, because of its age. Sure, so, now, I want you to at least put that in the back of your mind as something that's to consider.
This will be one of those things that we'll get next week and adopt, listen to those folks adopt.
So we're at, so we're at, uh, twenty two point something.
Twenty two point, twenty two million, seven hundred, twenty thousand, that's just on this proponent.
And you've already talked about another, sort of, three.
He's got it, he's got it, three million, if you think of that, whole, right, but at least another half million is what he's saying. You've got the paving that isn't on, which I think maybe a quote to look at makes sense, because you've got now a layer, you've got paving cutting out. Um, and I, and, and maybe, you know, a, an analysis of like five years of not paving. And then, and then, uh, you know, there's some disagreement on the lights, but I'm, I'm gonna say, look, that's not a, a number that's gonna change anything significantly, for cash and all these other things. It's, I mean, I don't want to, Mr. Y, I don't mind that, but I would think this is a, uh, this type of a, of, of investment, say, you know, two million dollars to buy a rescue is something that would make a significant difference, it sounds like.
Yeah, so the other.
And it's, and it's overdue and need, is that?
Yeah, just as Mr. Striplin said, it'll get us caught up where we should have been based on the, uh, apparatus replacement, the, the schedule, the twenty year schedule we had. It gets us caught back up, you know, the stuff was kicking, has been kicked out of the road.
And I would imagine Mr. Striplin would say the same thing.
Yeah.
We're talking about investing, you know, about three and a half, four million dollars in schools there. Again, a big catch-up there, uh, in particular with the HVAC building at the Edwards building, again, I think, big requests that I've seen on CIP.
Well, we've been, we've been piecing one, okay, one piece of the town.
Yeah, the, 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 the Carriage Brook HVAC, that's somewhat new, but again.
Something at Carriage Brook every year.
Yeah, we, you know, we focus on some of the, the larger HVAC.
The roof is what we just did, but, I mean, you know, you forget that Carriage Brook, thirty-year-old building, the, the decor of it, the original, is thirty years old.
You know, the good, the good thing is, um, after these things, a lot of the, a lot of the major components of the building, roofs, mechanical, stuff like that, HVAC and stuff like that has been, has been, uh, upgraded, now, doesn't mean something else is gonna come up, but.
And then you go, you go over there, both middle school roofs in, just in places that did that bit. Because she walked in during a rainstorm and drive central office. There's a lot of rain, there's a lot of work coming down in Maine, all this.
Which, which will make that?
Middle school.
Yeah, I've, I've already seen some of it.
Yeah, I, I, uh, trust me, I, I can attest about that, you go in there and you get trash bags covering up computers and it don't get forever.
Wow.
So, so, so this was the starting point, so like, there's either things the board wants to take off, add, and then we can come back with, you know, what we think that. Put that on.
I agree with Mr. Sheridan, that, you know, the five buses and what schools did that come up together, five buses, or the money to turn up with the cycle. I do like the lights, I think that's a good investment for Pleasant Grove, and I do think we need to look at paving, I'm not saying yes or no there right now, but it's the time to look at it.
I agree. I'll thank the rest.
Ms. Seager, what are your thoughts, ma'am?
Um, I think it's an awful lot of money, and, um, you know, we have a really high tax rate. So I'm not, I'm not pleased with this.
Well, you won't take off?
Well, you know, I'd have to, to look at it further, but, um, it seems like we want everything.
We do, you're right.
Yeah.
No, ma'am, if we wanted everything, it'd be about a forty million dollar price tag right there. Uh, Mr. Weaver, I, I know you've been.
I also, you're gonna have a hard time getting a lot of these things done, because, uh, I've talked to people who are builders and they're having a hard time getting materials. And, uh, aluminum is, is another factor, I went to buy cat food and I was told that, uh, China's decided not to give us, or sell us aluminum, or as much aluminum as we need. So cats aren't gonna eat, you know, make your own. But, uh, I know it's gonna be a, a difficult project to do all of this at once.
Well, but if we're allocating the money, it doesn't mean that we spend it this, you know, right away.
Well, the thing is, if, if you take out the debt and borrow the money, you're taking out the debt at the low, at the lower right now, now, can you get it all done like instantly? No, it's, I mean, some of this stuff, you know, a lot of the big admin building, social services building, so that's gonna easily take two to, two to three years. Um, some of these small, I don't say smaller, but the Abrams building or the Carriage Brook, you know, Carriage Brook and HVAC, that could take over summer. The Abrams, Abrams building might take two summers to accomplish everything, you know, all these, a lot of the other things like vehicle purchases, that's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's, that's a.
I would also add a half a dollar to Mr. Y.
And, Mr. Weaver, would, would your opinion? Well, I think it's a good idea with the exception of the lights, because I've heard people complain about some of the things that go on in Pleasant Grove, and I think it's great, but there are priorities that, that goes above just having something that, that you don't have to have right at the minute. And, and that's something that certainly can be done at a later time, not put on here to have such a a large amount of money at one time, that's one thing that, that will reduce it down, and I could approve without that, but that's up to you all.
So you'd rather have the ten buses on there still or just?
I think the five is good and then, then do the rest of it later. Might be successful.
Um, well, there'd be my suggestions, y'all, run the numbers of each one, run the numbers of just five buses in the admin building, and add in the lights, see what the numbers are, and if we can get a quote on paving, we can do that.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, I, I'm not sure if we're gonna have something by next week, but we can, we can, we can see what we can come up with.
And if you come back to the board, whether it's twenty two million or twenty four million, or whatever that number is, and show the cash flow, you take the MRR of four hundred thousand, five each of those years, plus what other savings are there? So that the board can see that this is a neutral proposition. When I say neutral, it's neutral because we're not raising taxes to accomplish this. Okay, we're borrowing money when it's the cheapest that you can borrow. And we'll catch you up on CIP plans that we have, you know, at least several of the items that we're talking about are five, six, seven years being pushed out um, in, in, on average, because that's the way we, that's what we try to do, we're finally getting some flexibility, you know, um, this is a great time to look at it. Steph and I have just pointed out that, you know, waiting one year costs ninety thousand dollars on one vehicle. That's just a small example of the cost, and that's not talking about interest rates going up. So, but I really think that, you know, this is the right time to take that approach and get that.
So, you know, we, we could certainly, you know, we could, we could pull together, you know, debt service, you know, whether it's with five buses, not five buses, paving, whether it's with, with another, whatever it may be, and then come up with what that figure is, you know, we show the debt service, we certainly show, look, we have fifty thousand. We show the debt service, we certainly show, look, we have fifty thousand rolling off from, from a lease payment, from a rent payment to the registrar. And, you know, we can try and back into some, some maintenance costs of, of, you know, what we normally have to spend on a yearly basis from those buildings too.
He gives the cash flow for the next five years to let us see how, how this works in with that. And, and we pick up, the debt is going to be paid off in the next three years. See how that looks. I just want to look at that.
Yeah, because, and, and, and Liz, just go back to the debt service tab, that debt service falling off tab one more time. And, and as Mr. O'Brien said before, we certainly have the offset of one point, almost one point five million right here up to fiscal year twenty-four. So we can fund those three years, then in addition to the next two years or the next three years beyond that, we have, you know, almost another six hundred and some thousand dropping off too. With that, two forty-six and one seventy-three, two forty-six, one seventy-three, then one point two million, then we have sixty-one thousand dropping off.
So you're, 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 you're at one point six or seven, that's coming off.
And then, and then what I would also show is.
Fifty-five thousand or fifty, well, no, no, uh, twenty-four. Through those first three, it's about one point six million coming off, but then you got, you got the fifty thousand that were paying for registration. Yeah, the partials.
Sure.
But that's another.
And that's a great deal.
Yeah, what I would also show is our current debt level. At the new debt level, and show the decrease in debt level, so that it's clear to the board that come year three, we're essentially exactly where we are today.
If, if we use.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying with the way you present it.
And, but, I mean, I, I think.
And if the numbers are right, it's a good.
It's a lot of numbers we're asking you to give us. But if you give us the, what the payment would be for twenty-two, still seven-five, it'd be down to twenty-two.
Yeah, well, it's twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, seven, yeah.
If we got five buses.
Give us a twenty-five thousand, you have to. This is the time that we can use to move forward. This is the best thing I've heard that been on this board, thirteen years.
Uh, I will disagree with you, ma'am.
Well.
I, I will disagree with you because if, when you saw a sign that thanked you for water, that was the best thing you've seen on this board, ma'am. I, I will disagree with you. The sun comes up tomorrow morning on that. When they said water, that's the best thing you've seen, ma'am.
I was there to find that water in twenty-eighteen, I mean, in twenty-oh-eight, you wouldn't be worrying about James, James River Water.
Well, you know what, but it, it, it's going to be, the reality will go on, but anyway. But if you can give us the, just show us what it's going to cost us per year. That twenty-two million and twenty-two, seven, fifty, what a.
We can give you some different, some different.
Is it going to cost us a hundred thousand dollars a year to go up with this, or is it going to cost us fifty thousand?
Yeah, what, what we can do, we can, we can, we can keep it at the twenty-two, seven, fifty, and we can let you know, not believe, at a half billion now, half billion up for. Yeah.
Whatever, I think, you know, whatever, whatever it needs to be.
Where we need to be, and then we can decide other, what, um, what we're going to take back. I want to see it all.
And, and, and we can work at it as a group, trying to figure out exactly what we want. I think we all have kind of stated that we'd like to keep that building. But I think that's one of your.
And, and, and in addition to, you don't have any place to.
In, in addition to, one thing that we're going to be doing is, and we've got, and still have wasted money here and there trying to put a band-aid on it.
We've been moved around three times since that happened.
This is up there.
Yes, one, one thing too that we have, we've got a meeting with someone from the state for social services, because remember we just made pocket or presentation the other day? There's going to be some reimbursement that we get on, on the social services building that we passed through. So we've got a meeting set up for next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. West Coast.
Matt, yes. And, and so hopefully by maybe the next week, we'll have a, maybe an idea, because, um, if you remember, uh, people that did our space utilization study, they also did the design for the social services building in Prince Edward, and that's how Kim got the idea and it heard about from their finance person, that they helped reimburse the social, new social services building there. So we should hopefully have some type of, you know, control on that as well.
Okay, is there anything else to be discussed in CIP? I don't think so. All righty, we'll now move forward with budget discussions. Anybody got, anything they want to talk about specifically? Although it's so dang difficult because we don't have numbers to go by right now. Although I will say this, Mr. Weaver, with what the state's doing, with the state is doing, you don't have to listen to me say, I'm going to ask for that one percent we took last year. I won't go out about that.
Yeah, I mean, from, from a budget standpoint, if you went, you driving or, yeah, go to the budget balance sheet. Yeah, and, and right now, where we are, just in the, in the advertised budget, you know, from board, whatever, you know, we've got two millions before we have to advertise, yeah. So, you know, we're at, we're at thirty, thirty thousand to the good right now.
That's counting the insurance increase.
No.
Okay, that would cover.
So, so this, this would, that could potentially cover the insurance increase.
Thirty thousand, eighty.
Eighty-nine-five. Eighty-nine-five. Now, I remember that, that has two percent for county staff, cover some of the insurance, had three hundred thousand for the schools, um, had some, some new positions in there, some of them mandated.
That's the total math, the three hundred thousand for the schools.
That's, that's what, that's what's in my proposed budget.
Right, they want what, six, seven, eight, nine?
They want seven, eight, seven, so they want another, you know, almost half.
So we haven't decided what we're going to do yet on that.
Yeah, okay.
It's more than that now.
Yeah. Oh, well, yes, you know, you know, well. Nine above.
No, the four percent, because we've got a percent.
The four percent, I think it's another two hundred grand, so it's at nine eighty-seven.
Yeah, so maybe.
Nine. Nine, yeah, yeah, yeah. The seven eighty-seven isn't above, that's not above, you know.
We have every hundred of the, the.
Three million. So, so they're really asking for nine hundred to a million above last year's budget.
Yes.
I've got three hundred in my budget, so they need.
Another seven, yes. And I'll double check that three of them, pretty sure.
And I'm going for solid finding the schools. New access, quietness. I, I'm pushing, as we get everything out from, anybody else saying, well, we can't fully find the school, we'll do this, and we're coming in hard and.
We just want to make sure your blood pressure's up.
That's all right, I am. We, we haven't done anything, like, one time since seven.
Um, and like I said, we'll, we'll get some updated values from the legislature, but, but again, I don't, I don't really have anything further unless the board wants to dig deep into any departments or anything.
How many, um, personnel things, we didn't have anything, I mean, position other than Mary Ann?
So we have a part-time for CSA, part-time.
That's audio, that's, that's right.
So in, yeah, so in my budget, I part-time CSA, part-time parks director.
And so.
Which ones did you not fund?
I did not, uh, I did not fund the ground maintenance worker, I did not fund the accountant.
I wish.
I did not fund the project manager, but we may need the project manager at some point, but that's our discussion. Um, and I did not fund the court deputy.
Uh, but the grounds maintenance was kind of a combination with the, with the park director.
No, so, so.
Right.
So we think, so, so.
It, it will free them up more, so they don't have, so, I mean, so basically doing that one helps cover this one.
Yes, we think there will, there will be some upside.
The board have some, some ideas to whether they think funding the accountants is worthwhile.
What Mr. Twisdale talked about, Ms. Eager, you have thought about that?
About?
Accountant. Mr. Twisdale.
Say that again.
Ms. Twisdale talked about the accountant and not Ms. Eager. What do you think about that? You think that's good?
I think she needs it.
And answers that question, that's three dollars.
Is there?
You know, I don't care.
That's great, who have that great?
Do you think the captain? So, but I, I, I think that's definitely something we got to look at.
Yeah.
Because we've got going on, I mean, so let's add that in now, because that's one thing that we know.
What was the total of?
Fifteen thousand.
Sixty.
So just put that in.
What is it, Mary Ann? Sixty.
Sixty-eight, one, one five nine.
So we know we've got thirty of that covered. I mean, and we know that these numbers are not correct, so we know the numbers are going to get a little bit better.
Bill, one, uh, one five nine.
One five nine.
Yep. It's just right in the other column to the reference.
Oh, right there, sorry.
That's all right. So go back to the, go back to the position, please. Yeah, and so, so then really, you know, the communication, the communication officer is that, that's basically a mandate, and that's two out of the four. Otherwise, besides that, I, I guess the only one that's really not funded is, is the court deputy and, I don't know, sheriff son or.
Sheriff, Sheriff Ness, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you will make the case?
Uh, yes, I do, uh, uh, first of all, uh, thank y'all for, uh, everything you've been doing tonight, it sounds very busy there. Um, as far, as far as the court deputy goes, uh, we've, uh, we've had, uh, uh, several months, uh, during this COVID where we haven't had any court, and now we're having a lot of courts, so uh, during the jury trials, we've been having to pull people from the road to cover those positions. Um, we put, we put that position in, uh, with the state, and they approved twenty-nine, uh, court deputies, but uh, we have no knowledge at this time if we will, uh, get one of those. A lot of times they give those to Northern Virginia and Tidewater area where they more people, right? But, uh, uh, every time we have a jury trial, we have to move people, uh, from one place to the other to cover things. That's, that's how tight it's getting.
Then, me, that's what we, we didn't get nine hundred thirty-nine that, about a thousand dollars. SCBA, we don't have enough votes. Uh, yes, sir, I understand you all busy. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes.
My understanding is that, that the courts are backlog, and so we're really going to have a really significant increase in court, is that correct?
Uh, that, that's correct, uh, Mr. O'Brien, as well as the, uh, the new guidelines set down by the Supreme Court, uh, as far as when you have a jury trial, until COVID has, has passed us by, uh, the staffing levels are even higher during this time. Uh, we've actually had investigators, uh, working during the jury trials.
I know that they stopped doing the licensing ceremonies with kids because of this, because of COVID, because of the backlog, they're now just mailing them out.
Right, right, there, everybody's way behind and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll just have to see how things work out. I mean, there's no guarantees on, uh, you know, the vaccines, anything anymore. There, there's a, you know, we, we're doing what we can do to make things better. Uh, you know, sheriff's office, you know, we're going to come to work every day and we're going to do our job. And, you know, uh, lately we've been having to move a lot of people around to accomplish our mission, but, you know, we'll continue doing what we need to do.
Sure, what would be the impact if we funded half a year on that position?
Uh, Ken, I, I couldn't quite hear you, Mr. O'Brien.
If we did half a year on the deputy's position?
A, a half a year, is that what I heard correctly?
Yes, sir. Start them in January.
Starting in January, uh, yes, sir, we, I mean, any, any help is, is much appreciated. And, and if it helps y'all to put it off till January, uh, we'll make it work till then.
And, and Sheriff, maybe you can answer this. I, I added the desk services admin position, and it just because I know you all have talked about that the admin workload is, 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 is high, is one of those more important than the other?
A- absolutely, uh, the admin position, uh, the amount of work, uh, on a daily basis that we, you know, kind of yell down the hallway, you know, raise your hand if you can do this today, uh, that's kind of where we are. And, uh, everybody that's there Monday through Friday has picked up so many additional jobs, and if you remember in the past, we had a part-time person, and we absorbed that, and now we've even gone further in time, as well as many of the unfunded mandates from the, from the state, uh, are for you. All these things are just, you know, they consistently pile up on us and on a daily basis in the office, we're saying, oh, who can do this today? Who can do that? And that's kind of what we need that person for, and to put them up in the front when people walk in right now. People that come in to our office for alfap, pick up a phone to talk to somebody. And, uh, I, I think it's important for them to have a person to see and to communicate with to, to help expedite what they need.
I had one of my, um, I had one of my, uh, citizens, uh, constituents basically say that they went to the sheriff's office, and I think this was for, I forget, gun permit or something, something like that, but it was almost an hour and a half late. Um, it just, he said nobody was coming in front, and just shows how overloaded, you know, the sheriff's department.
Well. Yes, Mr. O'Brien, you, you're, you're correct, because a lot of times, uh, they have to pull a deputy off the road to come in, especially if it's on a weekend, they have, they have to come in and, 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 and take care of that situation, because we, we don't have a deputy stationed in uh, our office, especially on the weekends, and even during the week, uh, especially with the jury trials, the, it's, it's, you know, the staffing, it's a daily, you know, like I say, raise your hand and, and we, uh, we talk with the, uh, with, uh, with, uh, uh, investigators as well as SROs, we've had to pull people from, uh, different jobs just to, to help out, get things done, fingerprinting, you know, all those things that happen.
Real quick, I'm going to ask you just two questions. I see, I think it's forty thousand, my eyes don't, uh, yes, sir. Is that forty thousand with benefits and everything?
No.
All right, so there's fifty-eight over there, yeah, fifty-eight total, and. And you said that there's a possibility that the state may make this a mandated, uh, a mandated reversal?
Well, according to the information that I saw that came out from the state budgeting, there were twenty-nine positions for court deputies, and every, everybody's in the same position throughout the state. Um, so where they assign those position will be depending on demand. And you look at, uh, like Northern Virginia, uh, Loudoun County, Fairfax County, you know, they have hundreds of court deputies, uh, as well as tie, some of the Tidewater, even Richmond areas. So, you know, all the small, uh, deputies, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, small sheriff's offices, they're, we're competing against them. So, you know, I don't know what their formula is, but if you don't ask, you don't get it, but, uh, at the same time, we're competing against people uh, much larger than we are.
I know this is going to sound like a crazy question, but they got hundreds of court deputies, how much of a difference would one, one in Fluvana make a big difference?
Eh, eh, exactly, Mr. Sheridan, and it's, it's kind of the same way, you know, if you were talking to VDOT, they'd say, you know, uh, Fluvana gets us much money for roadways and, and, you know, how much do some of the larger cities get? You know, it's, it's all based on population, and, and when it comes down to services, uh, they base it usually on the population, and that always doesn't work out to the benefit of the people in the rural areas.
I just want to clarify real quick, Mr. Sheridan, we requested for common board funding for that position, but we're competing with the other twenty-nine, it's not a state mandate, we're just trying to get a.
We could possibly get a piece of it.
We're trying here, if you step by it.
Could. We always try, yes, sir, we always try to get something. We ask for office equipment, we ask for all kinds of things. Uh, I can't remember the last time we got anything.
Did, um, did anyone see, and I read something, that they were looking at the registrar being paid on the same criteria as the trade.
I don't see what it is.
Though I saw that from this. I just made it, I know I saw it.
Oh.
We could look into it.
Yeah, well, for what, I haven't, I haven't heard about that. It doesn't mean that it's, it's not changed, but I haven't heard it, but it's, I've seen it go across. All right, and the only other one, uh, Mr. Guy, I need to scroll down, and I'm just, so, we're completely clear, and the only other one I did not fund in my budget, that this hot would have requested, was upgrading position from a library assistant to a children's program specialist, and that was, uh, it was thirty-nine hundred dollars.
Thirty-nine hundred?
I didn't do that in the shadows, request.
Thirty-nine hundred?
Yes, it's upgraded.
Yeah, okay, and I know that in the nonprofit, if Fluvana releases a house in France for over three thousand for their internet and election bill, Belize pays their space and everything, and I think that, um, we give back right much into taxes, that to the county, they only get seats for, um, a nineteen thousand, and we didn't give her nine, sixteen.
Yep.
Um, and the amount of money that we put back into the counties is a whole lot, um, so I would be advocating for that, but that's, that's just chump change, I think. But I don't know how much support I will get, but, but basically it's been very clear about what Fluvana releases housing has done for our county people, I mean, this is direct service, it's no cover-up, I mean, these people are getting septic systems and water heaters and things like that.
Yeah, for, for no problems, you know, I, I just love the problem, slap, with the exception of the few that we've got agreements every day with capital. So, so is the board, I mean, except what we can do, and, and if, if the board wants to add some others, we add them to the budget balance sheet. For now, like I said, you know, that's nothing final, and then next week we can start, so, did, does the board want to add anything to the sheriff?
I do. Ziger, what do you think about that sheriff's deputy?
I don't know. They, um, the deputy, are you talking about the clerical?
No, ma'am. Clericals are already included in my budget, Mrs. Eager.
The deputy. The deputy's one's not included, but I just don't know how backed up they are right now.
Oh, i- is it a temporary backup, when they, uh, catch up?
Well, I don't think anything's temporary since we've added the drug court, things of that nature.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Hey, well, the gentleman who can answer that question is coming to the microphone.
Well, I don't know if I can answer that, it's kind of, it's a changing, I guess, paradigm for lack of a better term, uh, with the recent assembly, and some of the case law changes, there's gonna be a lot more court, because they eliminated invoice mandatories, and they eliminated some other things, which people are not petitioning, get sentences, we heard, so obviously, we're expecting a lot of them to do that, with the change in the marijuana laws, remaining to see how that's gonna wash out, which is a possibility, a lot of those, get those spines, try to go back and get those sentences, we heard, so theoretically, I would say, yes, at some point it will subside, whenever the COVID and all the other stuff kind of filters through, you know, you're looking at probably, it's anybody's guess, like over two to five years, maybe, just as a case in point, we had a jury trial, and it's if they had. And then go to court, and still push back, we just got pushed back again until, I believe it was August, or July, August of this year, this is from a twenty-nineteen case. So that's kind of a screenshot there of the, the layout, so, I mean, and honestly, I'm sure at some point, everything will filter out, all the petitions will be filed, a few points, sentences changed. It's just a matter of how long that stretch is.
And, and just remember though, too, let's just say it does take two to five years, and then two to five years, we're also gonna see growth in this town.
Yeah, we already know why the pretty good population.
Um, I've heard that some people who are to show up at court have called in and said that they have COVID when they don't, have you, do you know about that?
Well, I don't want to question anybody's motives, but, uh, if you answer the questions in a certain manner before freeze screen, you're not allowed into court, you'll get another court date.
Yeah.
So it's probably without being accusatory, obviously, if you, if you thought you may be getting locked up that day, and you didn't think you wanted to, that you might cough a little bit, and say you have a fever, or.
I saw a joke, one, uh, somebody, somebody in this room sent me a joke the other day that the shortstop of the baseball team got put on quarantine, he said, I don't have COVID, because you got, you made a couple errors, I need to get you out of the field, you're quarantined.
Definitely created some challenges as far as, um, you know, the jury trial's gonna be the biggest holdup. And like I said, with some of the changes in the laws regarding jury trials, and the rights go back, get your sentence reheard, maybe changed how the jury, before the jurors could get the sentencing, so that this is a lot of our jury trials, because most people, on average, got a higher sentence from the jury than they would from the judge. Well, they changed that, we can send the jury trial to see if you guilty or innocent, we have a judge, or determine your, your sentencing, so we expect to see an increase, and that's a, a law change, so that will not dissipate, that'll be the same amount, we just don't know how to take that bit.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, your court deputies are also certified street?
All our deputies are full score in law enforcement.
So if, if you get to where you don't need him there.
Absolutely right, we don't have any, that's just that's anything available, they're all certified law enforcement. Most of them, you know, have worked the road in the past, and quite frankly, they want a better shift. They don't work nights, you know, as we get a little more age on us, the night shift is.
Be for yourself, dog.
Yeah, certainly, when they're not busy, we have them doing other.
So, so does the board, do I get three, have the odds to add the, the court?
You're looking for five, why?
Well, well, let's, let's start with Ms. Booker.
I hate that.
Ms. Booker, listen, Ms. Eager.
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
You already got three, I, I think you got five.
Okay, so is, is, is the five from the library?
Yes, yes. That's, that's less than four thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's the one that works with the children specifically.
But now that deputy starts when, uh, half a year, right?
Well, this, this will be a whole year, that'll be a whole year.
We can do it either way.
Okay, it sounds like you need to. I think you can use it right now.
I think.
So, so, so that's all that we have, we'll miss here.
We just added about a hundred and.
Yeah.
Thirty?
And we, and we said, we said this, right, and what?
We added a hundred, because there were thirty, Mr. Doll recommended eighty-nine and five.
Yeah, I know.
Ninety-two is where we said the top.
Your budget balance sheet?
No, ma'am.
Broke something at me, I'm actually having.
This is kind of, you don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ministers don't come back in with you, so hopefully, we can even lower.
We know, we know it's, we're gonna get better numbers than what we got, and what's, so, you know, we just gotta be patient and wait.
Now, he can't.
No, they gotta have, they have to have people.
But you know what, I explained to you before. They can come up with a figure in January, that's approximately, and like the other, but that way, then you don't have to wait, and, and you always project it under, and then you just.
I see what you're saying, but that's the one thing, Mr. Nichols, is always, they only want to have exact order of mouth.
But, well, we're, um, now, just, um.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and the ones, the ones that can't give us are like the utilities, because they don't give him the true numbers until like September or something.
So, yeah, he's, he's just using, he's going off current number.
He's going off last year's number.
So, so as it stands right now, we have in positions nominally, so we're, we're a hundred and ten thousand short, remember? This doesn't include insurance, it doesn't include anything for, for salary stuff, and it doesn't really include the schools reflux.
And, and, and make sure we know what things we added, so if we ended up having, then we can say, okay, we gotta choose which ones to be.
Yeah, we, we got them all.
It was only three things we added.
And you already have the three counties included in, in this right now?
Yes, sir.
Eighty-nine.
Yes, okay, yes.
Yes, sir. And we had thirty thousand extra with his budget, and we just added one thirty, so we're in the whole one hundred thousand.
Right. Well, three percent, that's what, uh, between about three and a half percent, any of those right there. From eighty, eighty-six to eighty-nine, we're probably talking about.
Was it eighty-six, was it eighty-six flat or eighty-six-five?
Eighty-six-five.
It's, uh, three point, that's, three point, three point four percent. Yeah, um, equalize eighty-six-five, my budget eighty-nine-five, three point four percent, yeah, three point four seven. So anyway, that's, that's all we have right now to the board, unless there's anything else, but I think we've got.
Thank you for the sound.
Alrighty, anything else? Do I have?
Take it home now, hey.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, ma'am.
I'm gonna tell you what, that is, that's happened ever, Mr. Weaver made the motion, Ms. Booker, Ms. Eager?
Aye.